Okay. Hello? Okay. All right. Good evening. At 7:08, I would like to call the meeting of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee to order on Thursday, August 18th, 2022. And I would invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District would like to acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and commonwealth of Massachusetts have taken their name. We would like to pay our respect to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historical Massachusetts Tribe territories to this day. So, before we begin Citizens' Comments, I just want to check in. We have one remote member, and I just want to make sure that we have good connectivity. So Julia, can you hear us? Excellent. And could you just give us a hello-hello so that we can make sure we can hear you?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Excellent. Yes, we can. Perfect. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. So, Citizens' Comments. If you are -- we'll take Citizens' Comments both from the Zoom link as well as from people in the room. I should let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded. It's also being livestreamed on HW Cam. For those people who are listening on the Zoom link, please know that that Zoom link is just available for the Citizens' Comments. And after we finish with Citizens' Comments, that link will be closed, but you can continue to watch on HW Cam should you choose to watch it that way. So if you have a comment, please know that this is our opportunity to listen to you. That's what we're here to do. If you have a comment, we're just going to listen. We're not going to have a back-and-forth, but we are here to listen. It's your opportunity to have your voice be heard in this meeting. I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And I also ask that if you do want to speak, that you identify yourself by name and your address, and it's very helpful to get our minutes accurate. So if you could please spell your last name, that's helpful to us. Okay. Let's start in the room. If you are in the room in person and you'd like to offer a comment, please approach the podium. Hi. I forgot one part of my little spiel. I guess I should have written it all down. I will have someone time. I'm going to ask Anna, if you'd time the three minutes, and she'll just give you a little heads-up at 2:30. Okay?
Hi. Good evening. Sue Cook for Puritan Road in Wenham. Cook, C-O-O-K-E. As we embark on a new school year, I wanted to take a moment to share my thoughts as a parent with two children that are recent graduates and one currently in the high school entering his sophomore year. It's clear that families are choosing to send students out of district. It's no secret. We can't mask the problems that exist in our district by filling seats through school choice to show numbers and increase revenue. We need to make sure that the topic of why our students choosing to leave the district stays front and center this year, and we're holding our decision-makers accountable. Our focus should be our students and the student experience, not our political endeavors. We need to have open dialogue about why families are making choices outside of our district, and then create a plan to embrace our families in town and show them that our district can fulfill their academic and social needs with our offerings and our school culture. Over 40 students left our middle school at the end of the school year and chose other educational opportunities outside of our district. I know that someone in the district collected information from those families at the end of the school year as they exited. And while I know some feedback was related to outdated athletic fields and outdated labs, I'm sure the feedback goes well beyond that. Politics are creeping into our schools and infringing on academics. We're granting access to our students' time, very, very valuable. A few examples: Journey Equity Partners engaging our students, and Dr. McKenzie with surveys and non-academic-related discussions. These are topics, programs, discussions, that could take place outside of school hours for students and families that are interested in pursuing these endeavors in content. It's my thought. I'd like to address the proposed school physician position and Dr. Michael Yoon's resume, which is attached to the agenda this evening and is being presented as the district physician. I am aware of Dr. Yoon's many interwoven professional and personal relationships that exist within our district, with the public health nurse and middle school nurse Marybeth Ting, Andrew Ting, who sits on our Board of Health, and with Dana Alara on our school committee. I do take pause with the personal nature of this connection to multiple decision-making entities in our community, including our schools and public health policies within our community.
That's 2:30.
The community is interested to see the topics that are being prioritized right out of the gate for the 2022-23 school year, and that begins tonight. Every topic and decision that you make as a member of our school committee affects our students. I'll continue to share how it affects our student. An example: Due to the mass exit from our schools, there was one freshman that was added to the high school football roster this year. One. In our 13 years in the system, this is the smallest number of incoming freshmen.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have other members who are here in the room that would like to approach the podium and speak? Okay. I see that there's at least one hand raised there on Zoom. Okay?
Bob, go ahead. You should be able to.
My turn?
You are up.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, but it's a little faint. Let us turn things up here.
I'm going to turn you up. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening, School Committee. I'm Bob Knowles, 201 Main Street in Wenham, founding member of Hamilton-Wenham Climate Action Team. And just to have a very brief written statement here, I just, I want to be sure that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District and the listening public are aware that both towns, Hamilton and Wenham, have approved climate change resolutions for their towns. This non-binding resolution commits the towns to actively seek out ways to promote energy efficiency, renewable energy generation, electrification of municipal fleets, among many other possibilities. The resolution's ultimate goal is to reach net zero carbon emissions by 2040, a very workable goal for all of us if we work together. Both the Commonwealth and the federal government have just passed bills that include critical and concrete climate change initiatives and goals. I also want to be sure that everyone is aware that the third leg of the "working together" quote-unquote table was the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District also signing their own resolution. However, this past week, the superintendent and chair have decided it's not necessary after months of discussion with the Hamilton-Wenham Climate Action Team, of which I'm a founding member. The Climate Action Team was hoping the schools, as the biggest obstacle and opportunity regarding carbon emissions in both towns by far, would take a leadership position and model innovative ideas and behaviors for all our students and communities. We hope the school committee, all of you, superintendent and chair, will reconsider the climate change resolution and adopt their own resolution, which is ostensibly very, very similar to Hamilton and Wenham's, if not identical, so that Hamilton-Wenham and the regional school district can all work together collaboratively to meet all the goals by 2040. Appreciate your time. Thanks for listening. Happy to answer any questions if there are.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any? It doesn't look like it. Mr. Tracy, is there anyone else on Zoom?
Anybody else online who would like to speak? Please use the raise-your-hand feature.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. We always appreciate comments in person, and we also always appreciate those people that take the time to write to us. It's good to have all voices be heard. Mr. Tracy, if you could close down the Zoom there.
We're going to close the Zoom. If you want to watch the meeting, you can zip over to HW Cam, their YouTube channel. It is streaming live. Thank you.
Julia, I just want to check in with you and make sure that you're still able to hear everything okay?
Yeah, that was a little hard, but I did hear. I heard it.
Okay. Good. Okay. Next up, for those of you who have been paying attention, we've been reviewing the school committee protocols, and we've decided that we're going to continue that practice this year again. And I've asked if Amy would be willing to do that today.
As elected members of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Number one: Members of the committee will make no independent commitments or take any independent actions that relate to the school district. When school committee members attend meetings of other committees or boards, they will speak as individuals. They may only speak for the committee when designated to represent the committee.
Thank you. We will slowly work our way through all those protocols through the year as we did last year. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would like, before we have a motion, I'll just let you know, I would like to hold the Ed Fund grant of menstrual product dispensers. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to hold? Anna?
I'd like to hold the minutes from June 16th.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Amy, I think we're ready for motion.
Sure. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda as written, with the exception of the minutes from June 16th and the donation from the Ed Fund grant.
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. All right. Because we have a virtual member, we'll need to do a roll-call vote. And I will start with you, Julia.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on one second. We have just a question in the room.
What was the reason for the Ed Fund?
Oh, when, so this is just procedural. When someone holds it, we'll vote on the rest, and then you can ask your question. Then we'll, yeah. And I would anticipate that we'll explain that. Okay. All right. Julia?
Yes.
Dana's a yes. Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion passes of the five, right? One, two, three, four, five members present. Okay. So, I actually, I don't know which one you were asking about, but I actually held the Ed Fund grant on menstrual product dispensers. And I held that because we have two people who actually made that grant happen present with us, and I was hoping that they might give us a tiny bit. Eric, do you want to give a little introduction?
Sure. I'd like to invite up high school students Olivia Sewman and Aeneas Strozier. They were the primary drivers and writers of the grant. We appreciate them taking the time to do this, but I wanted them to give you all an overview of their grant.
Hi. Thank you for having us. So this grant was a product of the civic action project that all juniors have to complete. So it started last school year, and all juniors were asked to work on a project that mattered to them and take action on a nonpartisan issue. And for Aeneas and I, menstrual justice was something that came up, something we're both interested in, something I had researched already for the Social Justice Club, and so we decided to work together on the project. Aeneas will explain.
We asked for roughly $5,000 for extra supplies. Greater quality supplies was a concern among students we surveyed, but the primary cost was 16 dispensers, cost-free, secure dispensers to be placed in the female and gender-neutral student and staff bathrooms. We worked with Facilities Director Mr. Geary to ensure that, in accordance with concerns about misuse of dispensers, that the models that we purchased were, along with being free, to match our principles in regards to how we should provide for our students. They were also free from any risk of improper behavior.
Is there any questions? We're happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No. I think it's awesome, though. I'm so happy that you guys did this.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question if nobody else does. And Tommy, can you just tell, did you all have to present to the Ed Fund? Is that correct? I just wanted to hear a little, tiny bit about that.
Yeah, in June, May? I don't know. Sometime at the end of the, at the end of this last school year. Yeah, so we had written our grant proposal, submitted it to Ed Fund, and then we had to go and present in front of the board to get approval.
I did have a question.
Thank you. David?
That a family member happened to mention this tonight and wanted to ask, was any consideration given to the middle school because there is?
It's going in the middle school, too.
Oh, it is. Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to come.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Amy, can we have a motion on that?
Oh, yes. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee.
Approve.
Approve the donation from the Ed Fund grant for the menstrual product dispensers.
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. Any further discussion? Okay. Again, because we have a virtual member, we'll do a roll-call vote. I'll start with David.
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Dana's a yes. Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
All right. And that is unanimous of the five members present, and the motion passes. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Okay. Next up, I think Anna held the minutes from June 16th.
Thank you, Dana. There were two things that we wanted to change. One of them was drawn to our attention by Mahala Letvin, our recording secretary. She inadvertently included Craig Genualdo and Wendy Ing as present in the last meeting. That was a carryover from the prior template. So I would propose we strike those two members of the staff because they were not actually here. And then I would like to propose that we change any references to the TURF Committee Working Group to the Athletic Facility Improvement Project, which is how I believe that we are now formally referring to that group. And that one was for you, Dana.
So, well, if I may, however, interestingly enough, I actually flagged that myself, and it actually is accurately reported that that is the wording that was used at that meeting.
For the presentation?
It was actually on the agenda as TURF.
So do we need to note that when we then made the motion to approve that project, we were very particular to call it something different?
Yeah. And I mean, I do, I want to actually, it's a really important point for everyone, that it is the Athletic Facilities Improvement Project? Project? Group? I finally got a lot of.
Committee.
Committee. There we go.
Do it in my head. Athletic Facilities Improvement.
So, I guess I just want to, where, Anna, if we're looking at the minutes, what actual?
Changed in July, so it was after the fact. I was actually at the meeting when they changed the name.
They formally changed it.
It was in July where they formally split the committee and changed the name.
Okay.
So it may be all right for these minutes because that's, I think, how they presented it. It was under the old.
I just want to make sure it's okay because the motion that we made and approved very clearly called it the new name. So just as long as there's no confusion about what we're talking about.
Add it in brackets or parentheses. That might make sense.
I think Anna's point is, it could be added in parentheses now. Yeah, that could be, right?
Formally known as.
In the motion, though, it does say, it is correctly, because I think by that point we have made it correctly. So I'm thinking about just logistically, how do we make sure that that's clear? What exactly?
Well, I think if you're, if you're going back in time, that these were accurate at that time and a change was made. So in that regard, perhaps we should not make a change, but I think moving forward, we should be clear that what we're talking about is the Athletic Facility Improvement Project.
Okay. All right. Do you, does someone want to make a motion regarding the, it was, the first part of your, the first part of your concern was removing the people who were actually?
Do you want me to make it?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Are I making a motion to accept the minutes with that change or just the one change? Okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the minutes from June 16th, 2022, with the change of removing, is it Wendy Ing and Craig Genualdo, from the list of attendees?
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. Is there any further discussion about that?
No.
Okay. All right. And we will do a roll-call vote. Let's start with Anna.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
And Dana's a yes. And that is unanimous of the five members who are present. Okay. And I think we are on to new business.
We are. Let me invite Mr. Mendigoni to present this student handbook for the high school.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mendigoni.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to present formally the handbook that we would like to make available to our students and families in a few short days here because school is about to start. So Jeff Becker, who is our new assistant principal at the high school, prepared a memo where he outlined the changes in the Student Conduct Code that were approved back in June. And then the ask of the school committee was to go through the entire student handbook and just note any additional changes that would take place. And so we provided you, I believe, with a mark-changes document where you could see specifically what was altered from last year. And I would, you know, would ask you if you have any questions at this point about anything that was changed.
All right. Does anyone on the committee have questions? Anna?
I just want to make sure, so the pink changes are the ones previously approved, the green are the new since the last time we looked at this?
I think the colors on there have to do with if it was myself or Jeff who made the change. I'm green.
Okay.
And Jeff was red. That's what, that's specifically what it was.
Okay. I want to make sure you understand.
My understanding was if I'm, that it's really just, and you just put it, or Mr. Tracy just put it up, it's these, just these things are the new since we approved in the spring. Just this list.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. I do have one, just sort of clarifying question to one part of it. When we struck the dress code requirement from graduation?
Yes.
We struck the line that talked about the vote, but there's no specificity about what's replacing it, which I'm fine with, but I'm just curious to know what is, what is the plan around that?
So what I told the senior, they're now the senior class officers, we're, you know, we're going to move to a one-color graduation, but the, what that looks like is going to be a discussion with them.
Okay.
Because we still want to offer the choice of what that looks like, but, you know, we have to, we have to work that out as a group, I think.
Okay.
It's because it's not just going to be, you know, probably a plain gown. A lot of the schools that have gone to one color have dressed it up with something else, so that's part of what we want to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a, just informational question about, I noticed that the, I think it's up there, that changing the name to the care team?
Yes.
I just, was that just a name change? Was there something? I'm just curious, like, is it, is it something different about that?
It's, it is the same, well, actually, I have to explain this a little bit. The care team is a broad umbrella where it's composed of administrators and counselors who will meet weekly and take in information from teachers or even parents about kids who are having a hard time. And then that team decides if it's an academic concern, in which case it will go to what's called the instructional support team. And the instructional support team in a high school is composed of a student's teachers. And so if a student is having academic problems, what the instructional support team for that particular student would do would be to meet after school and to develop interventions and a plan to get the student on track. The care team may also decide that students' particular concerns are more in the social, emotional realm, where some specific counseling needs may be the best intervention. And there certainly can be crossover because a lot of these things happen for multiple reasons. But the care team really is that intake, and they decide, is it really an academic thing, and they can kind of push it towards the teachers, or can they allocate more counseling resources?
Thank you. Do other people have questions? Okay. I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee approve the high school handbook for 22-23.
As presented, maybe?
As presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Anna. She's getting them all tonight. Okay. Let's start with Amy.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Dana's a yes. Anna?
Yes.
Okay. And that is, the motion passes. It is unanimous of the five members who are present. Thank you so much, Mr. Mendigoni.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Thanks. Thank you to Jeff for his work.
Okay. It is back to you, Mr. Tracy.
We are back. This is a document that was presented back in June that has gone through a number of iterations, and I would take you back to my entry plan where, in my conversations with teachers and people in the district, it really felt like there were too many goals and there were too many things driving into the classroom, if you will. We were putting too much on the shoulders of our teachers, and they made that very clear to me, and I heard it, and I made sure they knew I heard it. And part of the leadership team's work on this new set of goals was to pare it down, get rid of some of those unnecessary pressures that don't belong on our teachers. They have quite a bit to do on their own, and we pared it down to something we found manageable, reasonable. It helps us to continue to build our footprint, add some of the bricks to the wall. There are only four goals, and these goals are outlined with action plans and some of the deliverables along the way. The first one, the goal is building the district vision and strategic plan. We pushed this over from last year because the portion of the graduate work, it's got spread out so far. We got to a point where we felt like it wouldn't have been done well. So this is, this is important to the district. This plan is probably going to be a three-year plan. I think anything beyond that is pushing it where things have been changing so rapidly. So we're working with a group of retired superintendents to help us kind of drive this. We'll run some focus groups and set up a strategic plan and committee that will look at all of the pieces and parts of the puzzle, starting from data collection. We've been putting everything we can find in folders that relates to my entry plan, the Student Opportunity Act, any of those things that impact our schools and school district, we're putting in there. There's going to be four, five forums. There'll be one for students, parents, school committee members, administrators, and then in the school committee member, we'll also invite some people from both of the municipal sides of both towns to be part of that. And those focus groups will really just be kind of information gathering, and they'll be, they'll be separate from, from the committee itself. The committee will be a group of 20 people that'll comprise some administrators, some teachers, some parents, some, some older students, two school committee members, and one or two people from the community, if I can, if I can get them to jump on board. And then we'll build the strategic plan over the next four months. We have a fairly strong schedule laid out with, with the leadership team. We've laid out the schedule from now till the December 15th meeting, including all the meeting dates. This information will go out Friday in my weekly to all of the community to say, hey, heads up, get ready, look out for these opportunities for you to be involved. The nice thing that's a little different from the portion of the graduate is there's no limit to these community forums, so anybody can come. We'll have them in a big space, like, you know, the high school auditorium or high school library or something, and the TLA group will, will walk people through it. So it's, it's really, we're just trying to gather as much information, whatever it So it's, it's really, we're just trying to gather as much information, whatever it may be, from various sources so that we can, we can sit down and kind of chip through it, chip through our, all of our data and build a strategic plan that makes sense for us. Strategic plan will drive us and drive our goal setting for the, for the next few years. I think it's important to have in place, but also to get representation from all of the areas of the community, everyone we can reach out to. The second goal is continuing our MTSS structures, and this is really specific to academic supports in our classrooms. It does spin out into social, emotional where it, where it does get in the way of academics. But as you know, last year, we've spent a huge amount of time with our elementary group, getting them back to basics, helping them to, to get back into literacy. We're shifting into math this year. We are taking the literacy data that we, we learned, that we gathered from K to five last year and pushing that now into the middle school. That's our next step and roll up so that we can start to really look at academically where kids are, what's, what they're, you know, learning or not learning? Are they meeting standards? Are they progressing as, as we would expect? These processes will align with the portrait of the graduate and, and certainly our strategic planning when we get to that, that point in time. And we're asking, um, our staff to really focus here. If there's a, you know, if there's a kind of big picture piece for staff members, this is it. It really intertwines with what they do in the classroom. It gives them the opportunity to, to get more in-depth information about their students. And, and, and as you know, we're growing this through the system. So this year you'll see it kind of grow into the middle school and then into the high school and, and really supporting, um, that academic environment and really being able to, to say, here's where kids are, here's where we expect them to be, how are we going to get there? So it also helps us to build in interventions. We've, we put in a pretty robust intervention program at the elementary level. We'll plan to do that as well at the middle school level. One of the things we learned as we, we gathered data last year is there's really no system, if you will, from middle school on to be able to tell if, if, if a child's meeting our standards, are they academically where they should be? If they're not, what are we doing about it? We can't answer those questions right now and we should be able to. So there's an important piece of that. And that will grow with professional development. We got, uh, accepted into two programs run by the state and one of them gives us access. We went through it last night, a massive amount of professional development for our staff in even things like how they design their classes, how they're designing their curriculum, and how it's designed to meet the needs of not only, you know, what our expectations in the portrait of the graduate up here, but also along the way at a standards level. So that, that goal is divided into three parts, A, B, and C, for middle, uh, excuse me, elementary, middle, and high school. Third goal around DEIB work will get the final.
I'm going to interrupt, just, it looks like, did you have a question on a previous goal?
Yeah, just before we move on from number two?
Pause after going to two.
When we last looked at these, oh, I have two questions. So, um, one of them is just to sort of confirm that this will be the first year that Jen Clifford will be the overall curriculum coordinator for the entire district, not just the elementary levels. And so that's part of what the upflow is we're seeing is her involvement at the older grade levels? Okay. One of the things we talked about before that I'm just curious if we need to add something specific. So in the middle school goal, you had talked about sixth grade and having these very specific data benchmarks for sixth grade. And I thought you said when we last looked at this, you were going to add a little bit more of a deliverable for the seventh and eighth grade. And I'm looking at that and you're talking about the sixth grade data and regular meetings to review the sixth grade data. Did you intend to add something specific there for seventh and eighth grade that didn't make it?
So in the actions on the, you know, by January 23rd, as, as I mentioned in the last meeting, and I think some, you know, we had this conversation in that workshop about, you know, is sixth grade a big bite to take, you know, where they, they really haven't been involved in this? So we asked Zach to add into the literacy screener assessment calendar to try to, we have no data that's rolling up. Our data right now is rolling K to five. We have a year's worth of data. That now is rolling into the middle school with those kids so that we can, you know, the sixth grade teachers know exactly where they're at and they can pick it up from there and start, and then they're building their data set, which will roll to the seventh grade. So we really don't have anything firm in place. We use one math program I, I would kind of know is called, called iReady. We use it, we've used it, we've had it. We don't have a system in place to make sure that it's used consistently by all teachers. So that will start to give us our first data set for the entire middle school, K, uh, six through eight. So it's going to kind of roll up. First half of the year will be mostly sixth grade and then we'll start to build towards seventh and eighth.
So do we want, since these are meant to be year-long goals, do we want to add something to that effect? Because if I look at this and I'm a seventh or eighth grade parent, it sort of looks like there's a lot of emphasis on sixth graders, which is great. But, you know, the seventh and eighth graders, I know we're establishing a baseline. I guess I'm just wondering, do we need to make more explicit that the seventh and eighth grade data profiles will be built as the year goes on and we're sort of building up? Because right now it looks, it looks thin if you're a seventh and eighth grade parent.
Yeah, yeah. And that, again, that's, it's part of not having any systems in place. So as everything rolls up, we don't have anything between sixth and eighth grade to lean on for usable data yet. So the first data source we'll get for the entire middle school will be the first time kids use iReady at the beginning of the school year, so that'll be their baseline data. So then we start to grow that data, um, along the, the whole school year. So by the time they get into January, then they're now, now able to say, now we have a couple of different data points to use to start having these discussions. I mean, one of the things we've learned is, yes, the middle school is broken up into teams, but the teams were never actually used for the way they should have meant them to have been used. Where a team of, say, sixth grade teachers could sit and look at data, or seventh grade or eighth grade, whatever, any team could sit and look at this data and say, you know, we need to make shifts. We need to make shifts because we're seeing something missing here in the curriculum. We're not meeting standards here. Kids aren't understanding this particular piece. How do we go back and readdress that? So it's going to be, it's going to be kind of a little bit of, uh, uh, kind of a, a dog tail wagging. We're going to be going back and forth between data sets until we can get a smooth set all the way through.
Okay.
And there's a lot of data that came up from the, from the fifth grade to the sixth grade. So that's a huge advantage for the sixth grade teachers and we've got to spend time just teaching them how to use it.
Right.
Like, what do you do with it when you have it?
So I guess my point is, do we want to add a bullet, like literally add a bullet that says, you know, make, start to implement data receipt for seventh and eighth graders as, you know, just, just something to make it clear that we're not omitting them on purpose?
Can, can I just ask a clarifying? It almost seems like, and I don't, I'm, this is not a criticism, it just almost seems like that the, the action, which is written as establish a litera, literacy screener assessment calendar for seventh and eighth grades. I mean, it's almost like that is the delivery, deliverable, right? Is that what you're saying?
So once they've established that assessment calendar, then they're
So it's sort of like establish and roll out?
Yeah, you could, you could put that in, yeah. I mean, they're going to create a calendar by, in January-ish and then they're going to be able to continue along that road for the end of the school year.
So then maybe we should add as a deliverable, instead of just saying literacy data for sixth graders, literacy data for, you know, sixth through eighth graders or all students maybe? To make it not specific to sixth grade if we're going to use everyone?
Yeah, it's, it's not, I'm, we're not hung up on it either way. We just really know the focus will be on this massive amount of data that we just rolled up from fifth grade.
Got it. Yep, I understand.
Helping teachers to understand it. One of the things that we're trying to help our sixth grade teachers with is actually understanding the data that's coming up, which again is really never happened in this district. It's just kind of kids left fifth grade and moved into sixth grade and they almost start over in their, you know, in their growth process. So we, we want to try to continue this growth and build it through the system.
Since we took a, I think we were halfway through and we took a pause after goals one and two.
Yep.
Does it make sense to just ask if anyone has any other questions on one and two?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have questions or comments on goals one and two before we do goal three and four? Julia?
Hi, I hope you can hear me. It's not, it's not a question about the goal per se, but more the process. So what I think, um, some people are confused about, just people that I have talked to, is the strategic planning process is sort of the roadmap to get to the portrait of a graduate. So I know I heard from just a couple of people that said, oh, I thought we already did strategic planning. I thought that was what the portrait of a graduate was. And I said, oh, my gosh. So the portrait of a graduate, I just want people to understand that, and we all understand it, but I want the public to understand, that's like our North Star. And then the strategic planning process is the roadmap to get there. And, um, I love, Eric, that you built in a lot of different ways for people to participate. So if they're not on the official committee, they can still participate in the surveys and the focus groups. And I just wanted to really highlight that process fact for people who, um, think, oh, if, you know, if I'm not on the committee, I can't participate. So it was, it's not really a question, but it's more, um, like maybe highlighting more some of the other ways people can participate in the process. And if they're just community members and they're not part of the administration or the leadership team.
Yeah, part, part of that is Friday, you'll see, well, tomorrow, it's already written out. I wrote it this afternoon. The, uh, information will first come out. It came out last week initially, like, hey, heads up. Now, a little more in-depth, how people can be involved, and then we'll continue to just push it out. We're actually trying to work with both towns. One town has a newsletter that they sent out, sent out fairly consistently. We're hoping to get our consistent link in there of, even if it's back to the school communications webpage. The secondary piece is we're trying to just work with the other town, figure out ways to get it out to the greater community so that people outside of the school district will be able to kind of see what's going on, if you will, and, and have an understanding and get involved.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on those first two? Okay. Sorry for interrupting partway through, but
No, it's okay.
breaking it up, I think it's good?
Okay. The third goal is to continue our commitment to diversity, education, inclusion, and belonging practices. And realistically, we will get a final report. We have received a draft report and pushed it back, just so people are aware, I want to be very open about this, we pushed it back to the writer because we didn't feel like it was done to the standard we expected. And we're just waiting for that to come back and then we'll get that out to the, to the public as soon as we, we get an acceptable version that can be sent out to the public. So we're, we're cleaning that up right now. We'll, we'll get that out to the public with, um, the information that's in there. But a lot of it is realistically around, um, some of the things that we identified. I'll take you all the way back to March when we talked about the Student Opportunity Act. In that Student Opportunity Plan, we identified many of the issues that have come up in, in some of this equity audit across the last school year. So the, we'll just go through the audit, we'll review it, we'll break it down for people. There seems to be very specific points to focus on. Most of them are opportunity. Example, special ed kids, and I wrote this in my entry plan, uh, special ed students are not always receiving the same opportunities as regular ed kids. And that's, that's highlighted in this, uh, report that will come out. And, uh, the work that we'll do on that is, is also connected to our strategic planning. Like, okay, let's talk about belonging. How do we make sure that kids and staff feel like they belong in school? That's a key piece to success, school success. So talking with, for example, Brian at the high school, he was looking at dropout rates through COVID. They actually increased during those two years of COVID. What are some things and strategies that we can do to help those kids to feel like they belong, but also reconnect them to school and then bring them up to speed to where they need to be? So there's, there's a lot about, um, really what kids deserve, if you will. I guess that's the best word to use. And it goes to ELL students, you know, what, what we should be doing for them and, um, that. So our goal here is again, a year-long goal to look at this as a district and community. We'll open up and the process to the community, have some open discussions, see what people think, what they stand, where they stand. We'll continue to do professional studies. One of the things that came up in part of the audit was that, you know, the, the reality is that not all of our teachers are comfortable having these conversations, even with their peers. So that's an important piece of the puzzle. And it could be, it could be again, like, what do you, how do you, how do you differentiate in your classroom to meet the needs of every single kid in there rather than what we do now? If you go back to our MTSS program that we're building, we take kids out of the classroom, remediate them. Meanwhile, they're missing what's going on in the classroom. We send them back to the classroom. They missed that piece, even though we remediate. So our system was, is in my mind dysfunctional. So we're, we have the opportunity to kind of go after that and try to make those changes so with, with these goal two and three, they, they work in, in hand, uh, hand in hand. And the, the bigger piece of it is, um, continue to, to, to grow this as we learn more from the information that we gain from our, our fin, final audit when we do get it. Questions on that one? And then, uh, goal four, improving learning environments. We, um, we get a lot of feedback about our facilities and it's generally not, hey, this is amazing. So, um, we really have focused with the field committee has, has, the athletic facilities committee has really, um, cranked it up. They have, uh, really dedicated, as, as you know, back in June, they presented to us. They were waiting for a blessing from the school department. They're on board with now with two committees. They've taken their committee and split it into two. It might go into three. But they're really doing kind of what the project is and is all about. So it's really coaches and athletics-related people figuring out what we really need. And then the fundraising branch is, is a separate group of people that are not connected to the schools who have, who would be going out and do the funding. So projects like that, it's not just about athletics either. It's about looking at our facilities as a whole. Science labs, furniture, things that are, are available or not available to our kids. The MSBA program for the Cutler School, putting a roof on the high school so that it's not Niagara Falls when it rains. Those types of things are in our, in our long-term planning and, and part of that will be continuing to look at ways to, to fund these things. The field project is the biggest bugaboo, if you will, because it's approximately a 12-ish million dollar project of which zero gets covered by the state. Whereas on the other hand, the Cutler School project, combining the Winthrop and the Cutler School into one building, if we move forward that project, if the towns approve it, we move forward, that's a forty-seven and a half percent reimbursement. That's a big deal. A lot of, a lot of communities don't qualify for that much reimbursement. So there's opportunity for us there. We just need to, we're going to need to make some, some moves, which we'll see. There's a, there's a October 1 special town meetings coming up specifically for, uh, the, the athletics field improvement project and, um, related items to the MSBA Cutler-Winthrop School project. So this entails a lot of what we have and, you know, what we do. Some of it is ongoing. We did a lot of asbestos removal work, um, in, in areas where anything was cracked, broken or anything, we had it abated this summer. So some of this is already in, in process. These are multi-week, uh, jobs to do. There are security issues that are being repaired with doors that don't lock or don't, don't function as they should. So, uh, some of those are, are being tackled this year and they're, they're not cheap. A standard two double door for something like the high school gym is a $4,000 replacement. So it's not a, it's not go to Home Depot and get it. It's really, it gets expensive fast. Composting and recycling is part of this. You know, the, both communities have really jumped on this. We're continuing to work with the communities and work with their, there's a new, I guess there's a new vendor that they're using for composting. So we're, we're, Tom's been working with them to try and figure out the best way to manage that. Solar energy, you had a gentleman on earlier about solar energy. We have, uh, you know, the, both towns have approved these, these solar energy resolutions, if you will, to commit to it. So we're, we're right there. We're part of the towns, just like every other department in the town, the school department, uh, is committed to that and looking at ways. One of the projects we're investigating right now is a, the possibility of a solar, um, what do you call it? It's, it's a
A right?
A port, like a port that goes over a parking lot.
Yeah, the carport.
So a carport. It's, it's weird as a carport because I think a carport at your house. But this is a massive carport that would go over an entire parking lot, like the middle school lot. And the, it, the, the solar power from that would power eighty-five percent of the electrical needs of that building. So just things we're looking at, we're, we're still trying to figure out how to get involved. Grant money, there's a lot of state grant funding out there. We just got funded again for a, a project for this building to swap out all of the lighting and retrofit all of the lighting so that those types of things will, will continue to chase out. And then, um, just working on ADA stuff, there's a lot of ADA requirements that are not being met in our buildings. As you remember, last year as part of our, uh,
Sorry, did you say EDA or?
ADA.
ADA, sorry.
Yeah. Disabilities, uh, American Disabilities Act. So some of the things that we'll address are, you know, we, the first thing we addressed right away was the ramp in this building. There was no actual access, uh, safe access to the building in that, using that ramp. So we had the entire thing redone. And those, those types of projects will continue. We, we just, it, it's simple things. It's how to get into buildings, how to get out of buildings, how to access bathrooms, things like that. So we're just kind of doing a, a review along, uh, uh, different paths, if you can. And we're trying to seek out, uh, grant money. The town of Hamilton has a, a coordinator that works with them to, to seek out grant money specifically for solar and electrical needs, energy needs. So she's been very helpful in, in getting us grants. So there, there are no costs to the district, but we've been able to outfit several buildings, several of our school buildings with all LED, cutting our, our electrical bills fairly dramatically. We also have, we're working with a group to monitor our electrical usage. So they know exactly if something's out of whack. For instance, a generator went on in the middle of the night at the high school complex, and it was actually drawing energy. So it spiked the energy. The person figured it out, that helping us monitoring it, sent us an email, and they were able to go back and rectify that. You know, something like that would just continue to go until somebody figured it out. So we're just working on ways to save energy, save money, and then continuing to upgrade. Like, if you see that new gym, the gym upgrade is unbelievable. It's, it's gonna be a whole different place, and I think it's a place of pride for the community to be able to come in and go, wow. Paid for by U-Sports and, and school department. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to say, here's, here's what we're really all about. This is what we need to be proud about, the things that we're doing, drawing, drawing people into our buildings. We did the sound system over the, you know, up there, and that's part of, it sounds weird, but you know, why would you do the sound system? When you go to a game in our facilities, you can't even hear the National Anthem play. You can't, you can't hear an announcement, you can't hear anything. So we had twenty-one Bose speakers installed, and it is mind-blowing in there now. So it's gonna be awesome for, for our athletes. And for our schools, when they have school events, you can actually have all the kids in the gym and run an event and have quality sound. Upgrades to security. We finalized the camera upgrades. We're actually adding this year as part of this action plan. We're gonna add in some more door access so that we can better control our doors. And then things like the phone system at the high school. The high school had an emergency, and I'll go, when I was the principal there, if I was in the gym, I would have to run all the way back to the main office to make an announcement over the PA system. We've been able to tackle that this summer. So it's not part of this grant, but I think it's important to note that these are the projects we're working on moving forward. But now you can access the PA system in the middle and high school from anywhere in the building, including your cell phone. So that is a huge boost to our security in, in that building and really just people management too, depending on what's happening. So we're doing a lot. We're trying to continue to seek ways to pay for these things. And Tom will continue to work with local agencies, the electric company, gas company, our contact within Hamilton. So just really continuing to create quality facilities, you know, and it goes all the way to the front door. A year and a half ago, the first thing I said is, I'm gonna tell you the first thing I noticed about our schools, they all look like, they look like dumpster sites. So we, we were able to go in and immediately fix that, you know, and, and they're doing it this week, getting ready for school. Like, that's what it's all about. Like, we need to really present ourselves as, as quality within our community. And that's part of, you know, bringing people back, if you will, you know, starting to make those moves. So not happening overnight, but there's, there are a lot of projects on the list. And as you know, Tom keeps a five-year list, so he continues to grow that list. So those are the four goals that we're, we're establishing for this year. And I think it's a good balance between what we need to do at the district level and what we'll do at the, in the classroom level, without really interrupting the reality of why we're here, you know, our strong academics, so.
Okay, thank you. Before we look at them as a whole, I guess, does anyone have any questions on the, I think we asked already about goal number three, so just about goal number four, I think.
Yeah, it's sort of a combination of three and four. The equity issue is the, the health of marginalized, health marginalized students and teachers that.
You know, I actually can hear you, but I'm worried they may not be able to at home.
Yeah, a combination of three and four is, is an equity issue, which is there are marginalized students and teachers that are asthmatics. There's some that have had COVID already and are at greater risk of consequences for having repeat infections and so forth. And although I raised this in the strategic planning meeting, there's nothing in here to address indoor air quality. And the White House just issued on the, I guess it was on the sixteenth, a memorandum which called for addressing indoor air quality and providing funding means, identifying various forms of funding in there. But even more relevant, in Massachusetts, we are able to get for free a complete assessment of the current state of the facilities and their, their safety from a point of view of not just HVAC systems, but any, any things that can affect the indoor air quality and therefore the health of, of the children. And you and I were both on the Wenham, the Wenham Health Board meeting last night. We are running an infection rate in Essex County that's red in the CDC map. Eight point four percent is the positivity rate of PCR tests at the moment. There's probably only around about half of our student body are boosted in that, in our age group. Only about eighty-three percent are actually, have had two shots. But we know that those are waning in effectiveness. So we have an increasingly vulnerable student body coming back to already a significant amount of COVID, but, but also obviously the influenza season and so forth. And there's nothing in this plan. This plan is devoid of any mention and any identified activities that would help mitigate the risks of these students and staff. So I really still advocate strongly for doing something. And the first thing I would advocate is, is get a free assessment from the state. They have a highly qualified team that have done this for many other schools. And I know Amy at our meeting raised the issue of cost. Well, the cost is zero. We previously paid nineteen thousand dollars for a less than complete.
So I'm gonna just interrupt, just because I, I think I want to have Mr. Tracy have the opportunity to, I hear what you're saying is that. It sounded, you tell me if I'm, that you're expressing that you are wishing that there was a goal or a deliverable that are around air quality controls, is that correct?
Indoor air quality, yeah.
Indoor air.
Not to reframe it, it was indoor air safety.
Do you have thoughts on that?
I have a lot of thoughts on that.
Okay.
So we talked about this at our workshop that we just had, and I thought we made it clear that this wasn't a priority of the district. So I guess I'm gonna say it again. It's not a priority of the district as of now. We spent, as you said, nineteen thousand dollars to update, upgrade, and repair all of our ventilator units. We added in MERV thirteen filters into all of our filtration systems that are here. You know, and I understand where you're coming from. I, I just, it's not kind of at the forefront of all the other things that are in place right now. That, you know, whether it's, I guess specifically, I, I know you're interested in, in managing COVID, but I think.
Well, not just COVID.
Well, I think the reality is that people understand how to manage it now. And I think schools have done a lot to be able to manage it and really feel like we've, we've done a decent job. You know, is, is it gonna go away? Probably not. I mean, we're still, there's information out there today that the CDC is like, we made mistakes along the way. So I, I understand your, your, your request and really feel like that. I feel, I feel a little like there's some, there's a little bit of disingenuous reactions to this because I'm gonna use last night's Board of Health meeting as, as an example. The presentation that was set up to go to the Board of Health last night was an end around after our meeting last week with this committee, where we all made it pretty clear that that wasn't an opportunity that we were pursuing right now. And then suddenly, at the Board of Health meeting, there's a presentation on there trying to push the Board of Health to make the schools fix their air quality issues. I don't have a reason why that might happen that way, but this is not the first time it's happened. And I'm concerned that, that that type of thing is happening. When we've had open conversations, we've had the opportunities for motions. I think it's very clear where everybody stands. I'm just not sure why this continues to percolate up. So I'm very willing to continue to have the conversation and work towards, you know, what are these issues that, that are, that may or may not be there? You know, in my conversation with Tom Geary, our current, we were in the Bucre School yesterday. Our current air handling units in those classrooms with their filtration systems are moving out eighty-five percent of the, of the particles that are in that room fairly quickly. There's a fairly heavy-duty amount of airflow. So I'm just, I just, I just, it's frustrating. It's very frustrating to me because I feel like we've made this very clear as a committee. And I'm, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I know it's, it's very personal too. But I also understand that in the bigger scheme of things, we have a lot to do. And we've got a lot of, we, we've got a lot to make up for that we lost out on, and I think it's important to stay focused on, on moving forward. But also, you know, like I said, we're still very willing to, to look at, examine these things. There are, there are probably ten other things that we should have on this list as well. There are financial realities that are just not there.
Why would you not have the state make an evaluation? The, the original evaluation was not dynamic. There were no students in the classroom.
So I'm gonna actually, because I have a question, and I wanna get everybody. I, I have a question. I think, David, I'm not sure, but I believe you were referencing the most recent memorandum from August fifteenth from the state. And I wanted to ask Eric, there are under operational considerations from the state. There are recommendations regarding ventilation. And I, I mean, I can read it to you, but I think you're probably familiar with it. My understanding is that we have done these things that the state has recommended.
What things?
I can read it if you want. We have, it says districts are encouraged to continue. So it's actually not a mandate from the state, but it is what they recommend. Ensure access ventilation systems, ensure they're operating properly. Conduct routine maintenance, such as replacing filters and repairing ductwork. Those of us who were on the committee in 2020, remember ad nauseam discussions regarding filters.
That was Tom's first magnificent spreadsheet.
Consider adding air purifiers. Increase outdoor airflow supplies such as by opening windows, windows in classrooms as feasible, and open windows on school buses as feasible. And I know our school buses are a regional school bus.
Yeah.
So have we added the air purifiers in all rooms? That was one of the recommendations, right?
It says consider, and I think, well, I don't wanna speak for you, but I, I know from listening that, that we have, Tom has, like you just said, that they feel that there is adequate airflow and filtration.
I mean, the air purifier is. That can manage a twelve-hundred square foot classroom, well, thousand foot, say, next door. We actually went to Manchester Essex yesterday and got one of theirs. And doesn't move a lot of air. It's not, it's, it's not, you'd need multiples in each classroom to be able to do it right. And I know there are, you know, there are bigger units you can buy, but the, the one thing that teachers contend with in their classroom now is the current air handling unit, talking over and working over that, because they're always on. We don't, we don't shut them off, so it's, it's part of the, the process. And it's, it's really a bigger, a bigger conversation because I think if you're trying to get to a standard of a new building, that's a multimillion-dollar hit for the district in renovation in, say, this building alone, in their, in the air handlers that would need to be in there. You know, I know we've talked about ACH ratings, we've talked about the information related to how much air gets turned over in a certain amount of time. And in, in the reality, the reality is, I think, there's a problem with, with having a unit that can actually turn the air over that's, you know, currently being turned over by the systems in the classrooms. The univentilator systems are turning. We were, we went purposely to a room to figure out, you know, what the sensibility was and what it did. Would, would an air filter make people feel better? Maybe some, I would, I would guess some people. But I don't know that it's gonna do the job that we're expecting it to do in a, in a thousand-square-foot classroom for, for the, you know, for the, for the cost of the filters and the systems.
I'm gonna ask if there's any other people that have questions or concerns regarding this goal.
Not so much a question or concern, but sort of all like, Julia, I just wanna offer a little bit of public support. And in light of what you just said, Superintendent Tracy, address this sort of ongoing concern that you have raised multiple times, which what I like about the goals in totality is the strategic planning goal is obviously a long-range goal. But the goals two, three, and four are also long-ranging, but they are clearly the start of a huge process where this district reimagines itself in a major way. From the MTSS models, addresses academic issues. DEIB addresses cultural issues and inclusion issues. And then this one, Goal Four, the entire time I've lived in this community, this has been the constant refrain of, what are we gonna do about our buildings? What are we gonna do about the fields? And what I like about where we are is this committee, with your leadership and the leadership of this committee and our partners in the towns, we are, we are on the cusp of delivering a proposal that the voters can actually vote on and decide if this is what we wanna do. So I guess the reason I say that is that there is a ton of work, and it's all good, and it's all long overdue, and it's been asked for. What I'm concerned, David, about, about continuing to bring air quality, because we have talked about it, you have made motions. They do not get seconds. They, they die here at the committee, and that's what the process is. And my concern is that we've been around this. No one else on the committee is voicing the same concern that you have. I'm not minimizing it, I'm not saying it's not valid, but in order to move anything forward, you need more than one voice.
I agree with that.
And we don't have that. And so I think to Eric's point.
We don't agree on the facts, though, either.
We've all.
Not, not the opinion, the fact.
David, I'm still speaking. I know that we disagree, and that's okay. We will disagree. You have one perspective and you are one voice. No one else in the committee has expressed support, and yet for now, three or four meetings in a row, we have taken time to talk about this, and no one is supportive. The superintendent has just voiced specific concern and frustration about being end-run, which I think was the term you used, that a different board was asked to intervene. I guess my point is, I think we need to move on. We don't seem to have consensus on the committee. No one else is supporting this. I'm not saying it's not valid, and I appreciate what you're saying, but the district is, is not including it as a goal. And I don't think it's productive to continue to bring it up over and over and over. I think we need to move on.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you, and, and I, I think we wanna always remember that we, we really do need to focus on debating the issues and not necessarily debating each other. I think that we do have, and I, and I've expressed this at our workshop, that, you know, Mr. Tracy brings us the goals. It is okay for him to receive a diversity of opinion on the goals. He's received that, and these are the goals. I, my understanding is you're asking for a vote this evening, correct? So these are the goals that are before us. It's, at this point, and I, I think that the most powerful way, and I, I'm, this is, I'm speaking for myself right now, not as the chair. I'm speaking for myself. The most powerful way that I believe the committee can speak is with their vote. And I think that everyone, that views have been expressed, and these are the goals that Mr. Tracy would like to put forward. And I would invite, you know, people to offer different of opinion, but I feel like we're ready to express ourselves through a vote.
I have one more question on something.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Eric, on, under Reduce, there's a point that says make available a performance contract RFP. Can you explain what that?
Where, I'm sorry.
Say that again. I'm sorry, under the last goal, under Reduce, make available a performance contract RFP.
Wait, I can't hear whoever's talking. Is it you, Jen?
Is this better? I don't, I actually wonder if Amy, HW can, I'm not sure Amy's microphone is working.
Great, I think it is. I can hear me.
Oh, yep, there you go, okay. Julia, can you hear her now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, I was just asking, under Goal Four, under the Reduce bullet, make available a performance contract RFP, just.
So we use a request or proposal process for larger scales. We don't have one that outlines the expectation of performance for people like contractors in this particular realm. So I think that's Tom's focus is, and that'll also come up in, in policy with a fiscal policy that's somewhat connected to that in the next policy. And I think the next or two policy meetings, so.
Great, thank you.
We should probably write out RFP for everybody.
Well, I know what RFP means.
No, I just say for the public.
The word performance was.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions on anything different? I had a, I had a quick question. It sounded earlier like there might have been a suggestion that you might have wanted to add. Was there something, I'm, it was, I'm blanking now. Oh, I know, we were talking about goal number, the seventh grade and goal number two.
Yeah, we're going to tweak that.
Okay, so we just need to think about.
I just think that it needs to be a deliverable. There's an action on one side, there's not a deliverable on the other side that, that appropriately matches it, so.
Amy, do you feel like you can make a motion with that?
Yes, do you think I should mention that in the motion that we're adding?
I think there might be a way to say something like with an anticipated, um, an anticipated edit for a potential deliverable in goal two or something like that.
Okay.
Um, I, I mean, what do other people think?
That sounds great.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Okay. Um, I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School Committee accept the district goals for 2022, 2023 with the anticipated edits for additional deliverable in goal two.
Second?
Second by Anna Seidzik. Is there further discussion? Julia, do you have some question?
No.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, um, I will start with you, Julia.
Yes.
Julia's a yes, Dana, yes, Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
No.
Okay, and so that is, uh, the motion passes. The motion is four to one and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for the work that you've done.
Thank you for all your hard work and to Tom for the spinning.
Can I, can I interrupt briefly to ask the committee? Um, I, last year, I sort of unilaterally requested that we have a district goal, um.
Poster.
I did that.
You were the one, that's right.
That was my fault. I make, I make you guys carry that poster back and forth. So we can ask, I can ask it for another meeting, but I would, uh, appreciate feedback on whether we felt that was useful, not useful, whether we need it, whether we don't need it. Are you leaving?
I protest as me, no, I wouldn't.
She needs to plug in.
No poster.
Um, my feedback is I think, thank you, amazing shuffleboard at the meeting. I think having them available, uh, to us in some other way, I mean, they're on the website and other places. I guess I'm okay if we want to suspend forcing Eric to drag the, the, the sign.
I was taking responsibility for that.
I, I personally don't think we need them, but I also don't feel offended.
Other people, we don't need, I'm just taking feedback. We don't need an official vote here. Anybody else thoughts? Okay, administrative thoughts?
I'll do whatever you'd like to do on that one. It's an easy lift.
Okay, all right, well, we'll take that under consideration, okay. Okay, uh, I think, Eric, I'm not sure, are these kind of the next three, are they sort of all together?
I'm going to explain them as a group, but then we'll talk about them individually. The three, the next three items, C, D, and E are all connected to major facilities projects. The first one is feasibility funding vote. So as you know, we've been accepted into the first module for the Cutler project, the combination of the Cutler and Winterfield schools into one building. In order to start that process, the state has asked us to jump through several hoops. We've hit all of our deadlines up until now. The next thing to do is to now secure 1.25 million dollars as the initial funding to begin the feasibility process, so determining, you know, type, size, location, things like that. So we're estimating about 1.25 million with this, the help of the state. So the first one, C, the MSBA feasibility funding vote, that is a vote for 1 million dollars of the 1.25 million. Okay, bear, don't, don't jump in yet, I'll give you the rest of it. D is money, 250,000 dollars that was previously authorized in FY20 in the 958,000 dollar capital ask. It was a set aside specifically for the MSBA Cutler project. The state, uh, is asking us to reauthorize it because it was two years ago and because they would like us to use more appropriate authorization language within the communities. Uh, so, uh, C and D are connected together in that we're asking the towns for a million dollars. That's new money and then 250,000 dollars, that's a reauthorization of current monies that are sitting in an account that's being, that's being held. So those two are really working together for a total of 1.25 million that will start, help us to start the process. If we get into, um, October one, when we have two town meetings, these, these votes would be on the warrant. So they'll, you'll see the same votes except for, uh, the sub amounts. The, the towns are assessed based on the FY23 budget. So for instance, uh, Wenham's share of the million would be about 346,000 dollars. Hamilton's would be the balance, 600 and some change. So when it, when it gets to the, to the town level, there'll be a, a request for a million, but each community will show that they're only responsible for their assessed share. So those two go hand in hand. We are required to authorize that to be used on the warrant as articles, separate articles. Because we'll be borrowing, there'll also be an article that's a motion to, um, for ballot vote. It has to be a ballot vote because Wenham needs to borrow the money. And because one needs to borrow, they're both going to actually borrow. Uh, in the big scheme of things, it doesn't matter how they pay for it because we end up taking, we take out the, the bond and then they, they, we assess them the amount. So how they pay for it is not the issue, it's just whether or not they approve it. The third piece is I'm requesting of the committee to establish a stabilization fund. Right now, if we have E and D, excess and deficiency, monies left over at the end of the school years and we wanted to use it for a project, whatever project you would line up, in, in, in my mind right now and in all transparency, this stabilization fund is being established, hopefully if you agree and the communities agree, to be able to move a, a, approximately 500 to a million dollars in excess and deficiency into this account to use for the field improvement project. Because there's no place for us to take money from the budget. There's nothing in the budget that we can say, yes, we, we have this money. And we're trying to find every avenue we can to, uh, get the, the right, the correct amount of money for this, for this project where there's no state reimbursement. So that's just the establishment of the fund. That's all this does is we approve it, it goes to the towns, we put on the warrant. The towns could approve or not approve the establishment of fees, the, um, stabilization fund. If they approve it, then at the next town meeting or one after that or one after that, we would request a specific amount of money to be put into that fund. Okay, so this is just to establish the stabilization.
The fund would be open with a zero balance.
It would, yeah, be open with a zero balance and it's limited to no more than five percent, some, similar to our E and D's, which is at three percent. But stabilization funds, five percent, right? Yeah. So is, is that clear? So basically we're being asked by the state to read each of the votes and then vote on each section. Um, this is the language that comes directly from the state. They basically say, here's the language you, you use at the school committee level. We've done the same thing at the towns. We've met the town, uh, town administrator, town manager and their legal teams and their finance people and established the correct language for them as well. We're waiting for all the attorneys to just, uh, from the state level to approve the, the warrant language, so. Things are in motion, but this is the first step.
I'm sorry, did all, are all three of these language from the state? All three of these have very specific language from the state?
So the, the establishment of stabilization fund is from our attorneys.
Okay.
It was done by our attorney and reviewed by, uh, the town bond attorney. The town of Hamilton, actually.
Okay, um, so does it make sense, Eric, for us to get the fun part, Amy, out of the way?
I guess they read all of it, yes.
The whole thing and then if there's discussion, we can actually have discussion. All right, Amy, go for it.
Just to clarify, you want me to read all three exhibits in a row?
Just, we're going to do it one at a time. So you'll read the, the, the one that's on the screen now, both parts and then we'll vote.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of 1 million dollars for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School, 237 Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, 01982, including all costs incidental and related thereto the study. Said amount to be expended under the direction of HWSD Cutler School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16D and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need. As determined by the MSBA, in any cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA, shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. I further move that within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the select board of each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by the district agreement and by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the general laws.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik. Okay, is there further discussion on that motion? David, you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Just trying to, I sure broke my other glasses.
Okay, it looks like we are ready to vote. Um, let's see, Julia?
Yes.
Uh, Julia's a yes, Dana, yes, Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and that is, uh, the motion passes, uh, five to zero unanimous of the members who are present. Okay. That's one down, okay.
All right, on to D, correct?
You're going to, yep, this is the 250,000.
I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School District, HWSD, hereby restates, ratifies, and confirms its prior appropriation in the amount of 250,000 dollars as previously appropriated by vote on February 12th, 2020 for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School, 237 Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, 01982, including all costs incidental and incidental and related to, thereto. Said amount to be expended under the direction of HWSD Cutler School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district was authorized by votes of the member towns on June 20, 2020, town of Hamilton, and on July 11th, 2020, town of Wenham, and by approval at ballot elections on June 25th, 2020 by both members towns of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion, so-called, to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16D and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority's, MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement, a discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA, shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik.
I have a friendly amendment.
Go ahead.
I move that we correct the scripter's error that has an errant open right bracket after the word on.
Yep. And I, I concur with that and also want to note that the motion was read appropriately. Amy did not.
Oh, I didn't.
I agree, she did not.
Did not make any, any indications. The motion was read, she didn't say, and there's an errant parentheses there.
Bracket.
Bracket. All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. Um, David? I'm just starting with you.
No, I, I don't have anything.
Oh, no, we're going to vote.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, David's a yes, uh, Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana's a yes, Julia?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes, uh, five to zero of the members present. Okay, one more.
Okay.
This one's shorter.
Oh, it's so short. I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School District Committee vote to establish a stabilization fund for the Hamilton Oneham Regional School District in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half of the general laws, provided however, that the establishment of said stabilization fund is subject to approval of the appropriating authorities of the two member towns.
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik. Is there further discussion? Okay, Julia, we'll start with you, Julia?
Yes.
Dana's yes, Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David? All right, and the motion passes, uh, five to zero of the members present, unanimous of the members present.
Thank you all.
Thank you, good, thank you.
Yes, thank you. This will, this will still be, we still need to continue with the towns to work with them. We'll notify them officially and then, uh, work with them to finalize the warrant articles for the, for the October one warrants.
All right, I am going to ask the vice chair to handle the next item of business.
Thank you. Ooh, the gavel. All right, the next item of business is point F, to appoint a school physician medical consultant. Before she departs the table, I'd like to recognize Dana Alara.
Thank you, Anna. Um, I am going to, um, what I'd like to do first is disclose a, the, a potential appearance of conflict of interest, um, and then, um, let you know about that and then let you know that I am going to recuse myself and actually leave the room. So I, when I noticed that this exhibit, um, has Mike Yun being presented, um, I notified Mr. Tracy that, um, Mike Yun is in medical practice. He is a partner with my husband who is, um, a physician as well. Eric indicated that he was unaware of that. Um, I then, um, consulted with Dorothy Presser, um, at the MASC. She provided me with the proper paperwork. I filed paperwork with the town clerk and with Janelle, um, uh, Powers, thank you, I was not coming up with the right one. Uh, our district's secretary. I then spoke again with Dorothy. She, she told me that the correct procedure would be, um, for the vice chair to run the vote and that I should leave the room, so I am going to do that.
All right, thank you.
Please don't forget to come get me.
We will not, how, we will never forget you, Dana, unforgettable. Um, all right, I would like to, uh, turn to Mr. Tracy to explain the context for why this vote is happening now and exactly what you need from us. And maybe if you don't mind explaining to the public what this position is and what this position isn't.
Sure. So state law requires that we have a school physician. We've had one for as long as I've been here and probably longer. He happened to have retired in June. He was, he's a local practitioner who retired. We advertised a position during the summer, uh, got one applicant, Dr. Yun. Reached out, talked with him about the expectations. This is a 3,500 dollar stipend. It's not, you're not an employee of the district. You're, you're just paid a, a stipend to, um, basically connect with our lead nurse, so Leah Tobanken would, in cases of, um, a kid that, that can't afford a, a physical. Dr. Yun would do it for nothing. A, a student that needs asthma medication and has, needs a prescription written but can't get one, doesn't have health insurance, Dr. Yun would help us to navigate that. You know, there, there, two people raised concern that, you know, this, this physician position is new. It's not new, I just want to make sure people know that it's, it's a, it's been going, it's been, it's, it's part of state law. It's been state law for years. The other part of state law is it has to be actually voted, accepted by the school committee. So Dr. Yun is, is. So, Dr. Yun is, is completely qualified. Everything that I've looked at is, uh, you know, he's qualified to do this job and really acts as a consultant but also writes medical orders. So, I'll give you the best example. Go back a year when we were doing COVID testing. We had to have a medical order for our nurses to do that. Our nurses couldn't just test. You had to be under the authority of a physician. So, the previous physician wrote a medical order allowing that. There are also another, other seven hoops we jumped through for, at the state level for authorization, um, to be able to do that as well. But you do need a physician to write that order. It's like a prescription, basically. So, um, that's generally the role of the, the school physician. You, uh, don't interact very often with the individual. A lot of it is, uh, uh, medical questions that pop up with kids and families or at schools, like how do we address an issue with, um, non-English speaking student who came in the country unvaccinated? Generally, we can get help from our school physician. So, uh, it's a little bit of money for, for a lot of expertise and it's, it's, and again, it's just a, it's a legal requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're just trying to fill the position that was left by the previous.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Amy, why don't we start with the motion and then we can have some discussion?
Sure. Um, I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School Committee, um, appoint school physician, uh, Dr. Yun, as mentioned in the agenda.
All right. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julia Campbell through the computer. Uh, any discussion? All right. Hearing none. We'll go to a vote. Julia, what do you say?
Yes.
David? Amy?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. The motion passes by unanimous vote of the four members present. And I think that someone can go summon Dana from wherever she's put herself. We did all kinds of damage while you were gone, just so you know.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up, I think this is back to you, Mr. Tracy. Vote to renew the eighth grade waiver for field hockey and cooperative agreement for cheer.
Um, as the committee knows, we generally come sometimes a couple times a year for these waivers. We have three athletic seasons. Uh, this one is covering the current fall, upcoming fall season, which actually kicks off tomorrow. That's exciting. Um, and we use these waivers for two things, to fill spots, uh, generally with eighth grade students. Our field hockey numbers are extremely light where we may not have enough to field, uh, an entire varsity and JV team. So, this gives an opportunity for eighth graders to play. Generally, they play either on a freshman or a JV level team. They, they rarely play on a varsity team, but we do have to file a waiver with the state to do that, um, because the eighth grade is not part of, quote, "the high school." So, we, we've done this before in the past. So, this is a renewal, actually, I think it's a renewal because I think we did it last year as well. And then, uh, a cooperative agreement for cheerleading because we, uh, um, have such light numbers with cheering. We, uh, connected up with Penguin Hall last year and we're, we're requesting to do the same thing, um, so that we have numbers so that kids can cheer. And these are, these are just opportunities so that we can run these opportunities, activities, um, for our kids to participate in. Because if we don't do it, we probably won't run these activities and kids miss out. And I think, I just think it's a good, an easy way for us to make these happen for our kids.
Um, okay. Uh, why don't we start? You want this in one, I mean, it's one memo, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fall waivers, you can call it.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we start with a motion and then we can ask, uh, I, and then we can ask questions? Okay.
I move that the Hamilton Oneham Regional School Committee approves the request to renew waivers for fall for eighth grade field hockey and cheer.
Second.
Okay. Um, does anyone have questions? Discussion? Um, if I, my, I, this is not really, this is just a minor thing, but I, just some feedback for Mr. Genualdo is that, um, I would have liked to have just, I know it's the same, but I would have liked to have seen the cheer agreement or whatever we approved before. Um, I, I remember it was sort of a discussion about the Penguin Hall.
Yeah.
Um, even though I know it's the same and, that's just for future.
Sure. Yeah, we can ask him just to attach the, the forms that we filed with the state.
Yeah. I just, I feel like last, it was maybe a year ago and I feel like last time there was some more detail to it.
Yeah, there was some concern about sharing with a private school.
Yeah, yeah.
We also cost share, just so people know, we do cost share with, with Penguin Hall. Our grants, part of, part of our, uh, state grant funding allows them access to some of our grants. So, it's, we really are connected in some ways and again, it's a great opportunity for our kids to participate in activities.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, looks like we are ready to vote. Let's start with Amy.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Uh, Dana's a yes. Anna?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion passes, uh, five to zero unanimous from the members who are present.
You're gonna plug in?
Okay.
Just gonna disconnect while we jump.
All right. Next up, we're gonna give Vinnie a moment to get organized so that he can, um, get hooked up to the screen, uh, to do our FY23 budget forecast.
FY22, uh, year-end actuals.
Year-end.
Oh, yeah.
Year-end.
It does say that on the agenda, but that is true. So, that is a correction on the agenda. That's actually just for Mahela. That is a good heads up for the minutes that it really is the year end, not the forecast.
I am letting her know.
So pretty. Okay, so tonight I'm here to present to you, uh, the FY22 year-end actuals, uh, for fiscal year as in, ending June 30th, 2022. Uh, so many of these things that I'm just going to discuss tonight, we have, uh, gone over in our prior quarters. So, some of it I will be brief, but of course, if you have any questions, uh, during it, feel free to, uh, ask me as I'm going along. Um, but for FY22, uh, obviously some realities that we were facing, one of the biggest ones was at the end of FY21, uh, the school committee did authorize us to prepay tuitions for FY22, uh, and we did exercise that to about 1.1 million dollars. Uh, in addition to the prepayment of tuitions, we are also realizing a reduction in our out-of-district tuition actuals for FY22. So, not only did we prepay tuitions, we're actually seeing a reduction of out-of-district placements. Uh, so combined, uh, we are realizing a bigger balance in our out-of-district tuitions. Uh, this is reflective in our FY23 budget that we passed last year, uh, when we reduced our estimated FY23 budget for out-of-district tuitions. On top of that, and like I've discussed before, our health insurance, uh, premium was, came in about 3% lower than what we budgeted. Uh, in addition to that, when we build our budget, we include health insurance for every vacant position that we have at the time. Uh, as you know, and a couple points below here, we had a lot of vacant positions this year, uh, last year, uh, and they remained vacant for almost the entire year. So, not only will you see in here, um, uh, residual balance from payroll, but this is the other side of it, a residual balance from the, their benefit side. Uh, in addition, we had an extremely high, uh, teacher turnover as well as a TA turnover. Uh, and like I said, we had at least 10 vacant positions, uh, and these 10 positions remained vacant through the entire year. We had nearly 75 positions turnover during the year. Uh, so with the combination of everything, as you'll see through the presentation, uh, left us with, uh, a residual balance in our payroll accounts. Uh, and lastly, as many of us are facing, uh, in our personal lives and outside of the school district, there are a lot of supply chain issues, uh, that have held up a lot of our orders. Therefore, we've had to cancel a lot of purchase orders, uh, and cancel contracts, uh, that have resulted in additional funds, uh, being returned to the district. So, overall, uh, for fiscal year FY22, uh, we are reporting a balance of roughly 2.8 million dollars. Um, this is presented in DAC form or by, uh, location, uh, by the five schools and the main, uh, district-wide, uh, departments. So, like most of my budget presentations, I always, uh, struggle with how to present it to you. Do I present it in terms of, uh, by DAC form or location, or do I present it in terms of, um, the DESI category? So, right now, I tried to combine the two, uh, with an emphasis on the DESI category a little bit stronger because that's the way we approve the budget and how we track it, uh, throughout the year. So, through each of these, I've broken out, um, each school and each location and tried to give you the main categories, uh, by DESI and what the change is. I'm not gonna talk about every single one of them, but if there's anything on here that I skip over that you want to discuss, uh, obviously just let me know. Uh, some of them are, are really small balances. That's why I'm not hitting on all of them. Uh, but just to go through it, starting with the Bucker School, uh, there, we have left over roughly $9,000. Um, the big balances there are around instructional materials and you'll see this throughout the presentation. Um, a lot of our instructional materials this year, uh, were left unspent. A lot of it has to do with the consumption was reduced this year, as well as a lot of leftover supplies from FY21 after we closed the school and we were half remote, half in person. There was a lot of things that we purchased in '21 that we just didn't use. So, we consumed those in '22 and therefore didn't purchase new items in '22. Uh, so throughout this, you'll see, uh, that we do have a good amount of instructional materials left over. Uh, in addition for the Bucker Elementary School, our other teaching services DESI category ended in a deficit of about $14,000. Uh, the main cause of this was the addition of two kindergarten TAs. These were transferred from the Cutler School, though. So, when I get to the Cutler, uh, you'll see that there's a positive balance left over because of those two, two TAs. The reason we don't change the budget is because they both fall into the same DESI category. So, we don't have to move the budget because they're all flowing to the same category. Um, other than that, we have a residual balance in our pupil services DESI category of roughly $12,000. Uh, this is from two main areas. We had one salary scale movement that did not occur. Uh, in addition to that, we had difficulties keeping our lunch monitors, uh, fully employed and there were, uh, two vacancies throughout the year. Uh, another big one is our professional development where again, we had, uh, one staff member turnover and a reduction of our external professional development, uh, that we supplied to our teachers. This mainly has to do with a little bit of COVID. Uh, a lot of PD was canceled throughout the year. We didn't have teachers travel as much outside of the district and we didn't have, um, contractors come in as much. Um, offsetting a lot of these balances for the Bucker Elementary School is our teachers category where we had a deficit of roughly $23,000. Uh, this is left over from three salaries, salary scale movements not occurring. Uh, we did have one unpaid FMLA. We had one retirement. We had one additional, uh, staff member turnover. Uh, these four items leave a positive balance, but they're offset by the additional kindergarten teacher at the Bucker Elementary School. So, when we built the budget, um, nearly two years ago now, we knew we were gonna have a, a need for a seventh kindergarten. When we built the budget, we thought that seventh kindergarten was gonna be housed at the Winthrop Elementary School. When it came to actuals, we had the space at Bucker, not at Winthrop. So, the additional class was at Bucker. Um, so that made, um, Bucker's teacher category become a deficit and you'll see the positive or reverse on the Winthrop school side. Uh, the last category for Bucker is just capital maintenance and operations. Uh, this ended the year with a minor deficit of about $2,000 and this was mainly attributed to our increased maintenance costs and increased utility costs that we're all seeing in our homes as well. I also tried to break down how much is separated from payroll and non-payroll so you guys can see that a lot of this is left over because we just couldn't fill positions all year. Um, so for Bucker, we ended with a negative $27,000 in payroll and a positive $36,000 in non-payroll. But just again, the only reason Bucker ended, uh, negative with the payroll is because the positions were budgeted at another school. Moving on to the Cutler Elementary School, we're seeing an overall balance of roughly $265,000. Again, it's the same story with instructional materials. We had left over FY21 supplies and, uh, for Cutler, there was a decrease in their technology replacements. Uh, in addition, our other teaching services, we had roughly a $90,000 balance. Uh, again, this is from the two TAs that we just saw at Bucker. Uh, and in addition, we had one of our Merrimack fellows were actually picked up by the Esser Grant and not our general budget. Uh, so because of that, we can return, uh, that money, uh, to the towns through E and D. Uh, in addition, our instructional leadership category, uh, left a balance of roughly $25,000 and this was mainly due to the turnover in the principal position as well as the turnover in the administrative assistance position. Uh, so both those positions, uh, flipped during the year and the salaries that came in were lower than what we budgeted for. Uh, another big area is our teachers category where we had a lot of turnover at the Cutler Elementary School. There was six, uh, different staff members. We had one, uh, staff member retire and we had five teachers apply for a salary scale movement that did not fulfill the requirements by the end of the year. Uh, and again, lastly, just the capital maintenance and operations, uh, ended the year with $5,000 and this was due to an, uh, FMLA in that category and a turnover in the staff as well. So, in total, for the Cutler Elementary School, we were left with $219,000 in payroll and $46,000 in non-payroll. For the Winthrop Elementary School, we're seeing just about the same balance of roughly $265,000. Uh, they did consume a little bit more of their materials than the rest of the two elementary schools and they're ending with roughly about $4,500. Uh, this mainly has to do with the, their increase of, uh, PE equipment and work on their project adventure wall. Uh, in addition to that, our other teaching services left a balance of roughly $102,000 and this was, this was mainly due to the addition of grants this year. Uh, we were able to use roughly $70,000 of our IDEA grant to offset TA salaries and in addition to that, we wore, we were awarded an ARPA grant that we were able to also extend one of our TAs to that, uh, ARPA grant as well. Uh, those two alone saved us roughly $100,000, uh, because of the grants right there. Um, the next big one is teachers. Where our category leaves us with roughly $120,000 at the end of the year. And just to point out, this is that other, uh, kindergarten teacher that we saw at Bucker. So, this is the other half of the positive, negative side of the kindergarten teacher. Um, and in addition to that, we did receive $31,000 less in pre-K tuitions this year. Um, we saw a reduction in the amount of students that are paying us each year and we saw a reduction in the amount of days that they signed up for. So, there weren't as many, uh, four, five days a week. They more chose two or three days a week. Uh, so we did see a minor reduction in our pre-K offset, uh, which increased the expenditures for that category. Uh, and again, the capital maintenance and operations, uh, we were left with a balance of roughly $13,000 and this was mainly due to a vacancy at the Winthrop Elementary School around that custodian position that was offset by an increase in supplies and utilities. around that custodian position that was offset by an increase in supplies and utilities. So overall, the Winthrop Elementary School ended with two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, of which two hundred and forty-nine thousand was related to payroll and twenty-two thousand was non-payroll. For the Miles River Middle School, we are left with a balance of roughly fifty-nine thousand dollars. Again, our instructional materials have a balance here. This is a little bit more attributed to the leftover math workbooks that they did not consume and in offset by a little bit of an increase to their furniture replacement costs that we saw. Another category is instructional leadership, where we're seeing a balance of roughly ten thousand dollars. This was due to the homework club stipend not running, so it was not issued. And in addition, we did not have, we had one less team leader stipend. At the middle school, we run, I believe, nine teams, but for last year, we only ran eight, so one of the stipends we did not end up paying out. You'll see here at Miles River and again at the high school that a lot of the professional development money was left over. We just did not use it, so I kinda just put that we own eighty-five percent of their total PD budget was not spent. Again, mostly related to COVID. Another big category is the teachers at roughly thirty-four thousand dollars, which again, a lot of the staff turnover. We had five teachers turnover at the middle school. We had one salary scale advancement movement that did not occur. And in addition, we had a little bit of a school choice offset that affected the number as well as a reduction to our sixth-class assignment. So for FY twenty, for every budget, we usually budget about three teaching sixth-class assignments. At the middle school, we didn't have any in FY twenty-two. Lastly, for the middle school, we're looking at a negative sixteen thousand dollars for our capital maintenance and operations. And this is attributed to the increased custodian contract. So the budgeted amount that we put in for FY twenty-two was a little bit lower than what the actual contract was settled at. So you will see a little bit of a negative balance there. On top of that, there was another FMLA related to the capital operations and maintenance as well as increased maintenance supplies, gas costs. But this is offset by a residual balance in our fixed furniture costs. So earlier in the year, we asked for a budget transfer to buy new art tables and science tables. When it actually came to four wishin', we ordered them. We needed about three less art tables and four less science tables, which came up with a balance here as well, so we're returning those funds. So at the end, in terms of payroll, Miles River has about forty thousand dollars left over and in non-payroll, roughly nineteen thousand. For the high school, we're seeing a total balance of four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And a lot of this is in instructional materials as well, where we're left with a balance of one hundred and twenty-one thousand. But as you remember, I asked you guys to transfer roughly fifty thousand dollars to help with the auditorium lighting project. But when we started planning for the project, we realized that it was going to be a lot more cost than that, and it was gonna take us a lot longer than we thought. So we did not spend that money. So it is still sitting there and therefore is getting returned as unspent funds. In addition, we did purchase a lot of, a lot of new iPads last year. So because of that, we did not need as much as our technology replacement. Things weren't breaking as much because we had brand-new devices everywhere. In addition to that, we had about forty-eight thousand dollars left in our other teaching services, again, because of staff turnovers, FMLAs, and partial year vacancies around our TAs. Our instructional leadership category ended the year in a negative forty-seven, about forty-eight thousand dollars. And this is mainly due to the reorganization of the, I was trying to think of a nice name for it, but a reorganization of our Director of Teaching and Learning position slash principal position slash superintendent, Mr. Tracy. As you remember during the budget process, we reduced the principal portion of his position by half, moved half of that half into curriculum and instruction and the other half into professional development. So you will see this description in three different spots. This is the first one. So that, that is why this, that is why the high school had a negative balance because instead of there being a point-five principal, there ended up being a one-point-oh. In addition to that, we had the same leftover professional development, where we only spent roughly seventy thousand dollars of our professional development overall budget. In addition, the biggest category left over for the high school is our teachers, where we had roughly three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar balance. And the biggest category here is the leftover school choice offset. So when we develop the budget, when it comes to our revenues, we, we try to be conservative about it. So when it comes to school choice, there's two different parts. There's your, what I call your base part, which is roughly five thousand dollars per student that we intake. But then if any of these students are special ed students and get additional services, there is additional funds that flow to us through the receiving district. We do not budget for the special ed portion of school choice because we don't know what that's gonna be year to year. We have a very good handle on how many kids are coming in. So that base at five thousand dollars per student, we, we know what that is. The special ed increment is too much of a moving target to nail down, so we don't budget for it. But what we do when we receive it is that we increase our offsets. So even though we're not reporting it as a revenue in the first year, it's getting reported in E and D in the second year. So either way, it's getting returned to the towns. It's just on what line of the budget does it show up on. And it, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's a little, okay. The next, the next major category is a sixty-five thousand dollar savings from our fine arts curriculum leader position being picked up by the assistant principal, Mrs. Losi. So I wanna thank her for picking up those responsibilities and saving us approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we saved sixty-four thousand dollars from eight staff turnovers, an additional balance from three salary scale movements that did not occur, two FMLAs, and then a reduction of a one-point-oh FTE special ed rise teacher. So for capital maintenance and operations, just like the other schools, we had increased custodial contract, another FMLA, and increased gas and furniture costs. For guidance, we are left with a balance of roughly fifteen thousand dollars. Again, this is from a salary scale movement that did not occur. We had one retirement in this category, and we had a minor reduction to our contracted services. So in total, for the high school, we're left with roughly three hundred and twenty-nine thousand in payroll and a hundred and forty-six thousand in non-payroll. The athletics DAC or location all flows to one DESI category. So everything within the athletics department gets reported on one DESI category, pupil services. So that's the only one for athletics. We had a minor balance of roughly forty-eight thousand dollars. We saw increased costs for our transportation, like every district has around Massachusetts, along with an increase in our league fees. These both items were reduced by the reduction in our user fee match actuals. So we set a budget for it at the beginning of the year, but when people start enrolling, we're only matching a percentage of everyone that enrolls, and we didn't need as much because we didn't have as much enrollment in athletics compared to the budget. So in total, for athletics, our payroll portion is roughly five hundred dollars, and our non-payroll is thirty-seven thousand. Now, the central office DAC will, will be a little confusing, so stop me if, if I trip up. But in total, we have roughly five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars left over. One of the bigger categories is in administration, where we're seeing roughly nineteen thousand dollars left over from our school committee balance. From year to year, we budget a certain amount in legal fees. This is to cover any contract negotiations during the year or anything that comes up. Last year, we didn't have a lot of legal fees, so there was a residual balance left over. As you remember, when we built the budget, we planned on spending forty thousand dollars for a strategic plan in FY twenty-two. But with everything going on in FY twenty-two, we didn't get to the strategic plan. We're getting to it in FY twenty-three. So the money from FY twenty-two remains and will be converted into E and D at the end of the, at the end of the year. In addition to that, there was roughly sixty-six thousand dollars left over from both the superintendent and assistant superintendent discretionary spending accounts. As I kinda say during the budget process, both of us have a little cushion and discretionary money built in in case things happen. But as you can see, there was money left over in almost every category, so we didn't need to utilize that money, so we're returning that as well. In addition, we saved about a hundred and three thousand dollars from not hiring an HR position. I did lose a lot of hair from it, but we saved a hundred and three thousand dollars. In addition to that, our accounting position, Larry Fleming, took another job for the city of Peebody or town of Peebody, either one. Peebody at the end of, I think, April. So for May, April, May, and June, we didn't have those, we didn't have the salary expenses. I picked up most of his work as well, so we realized the savings of about eighteen thousand dollars there. These savings have been offset by a reclassification of fifty-five thousand dollars in administrative technology. I know you guys have heard me say this a couple times before, but prior to us taking over the budget, a lot of our software for behind-the-scenes was all being charged to student instructional technology. So BudgetSense, for instance, our accounting software, was being recorded as instructional technology for students. That's not what it is. It's administrative technology. So over the past two years, as these payments come up, we're re-categorizing them into the administrative portion of the budget and taking it out of technology. So you'll see this again play out in our FY twenty-four budget. Well, you'll see an increase in that line and a decrease in the technology line. Okay, another one is our other teaching services, where we saw a balance of roughly forty-two thousand dollars. This was due to a vacancy in our English language learner tutors, otherwise known as our ELL tutor, as well as a serious difficulty in hiring substitutes all year. So a lot of, a lot of people were pulling double duty, so we have a leftover balance in our substitutes account. The next one is our instructional leadership, where we're seeing a balance of roughly eighty-nine thousand dollars. Again, this is where you see the second part of Eric's position from last year. In addition, we budgeted for an administrative assistant for the curriculum and instruction office. She retired, I think, at the end of FY twenty. That position was replaced with our community family engagement liaison, which falls to a different DESI category. So there's a, there is a portion of the salary that's left over under this category. Okay, and then the third part of Eric's position shows up here. So that's the other portion of the residual balance under professional development, which represented about twenty-five percent of that position. Continuing with central office, we have roughly fifty-seven thousand dollars left over in pupil services. A lot of this, the, the balance that's left over has to do with the food service match not being needed. So historically, at least the past nine years, our food service department has ended in a deficit. But everyone knows, last year, food was, meals were free for all students. Because of this, the district finally realized a profit in our food service department, so there was not a need for us to match their deficit. I believe it was around seventy thousand dollars, so that whole balance is being returned. In addition to that, we saw a minor reduction in our budget to actual transportation expenses. Those two items are being offset by the addition of the community family engagement liaison. The next one is tuitions. This is only relates to one account, and that's our school choice out. So you have both sides. We take students in from other towns, and we send our own students out to other towns. Historically, we usually look back at a three or four-year average and pick the highest one. Actuals came in, and we were roughly fifty-one thousand dollar difference. The next item is our teachers category, where we saw one FMLA that caused the need for another teacher to come in and fill that gap. So at some point in the year, we had two teachers being charged to the same account, which left a negative balance of roughly twenty-five thousand dollars in that category. So overall, in the central office, we're seeing roughly three hundred thousand dollars left in payroll and two hundred and seventy-one thousand left in non-payroll. For our district maintenance DAC, overall, we're seeing seventeen thousand dollars left over. Just like the athletics department, this all flows to one DESI category, so everything's flowing to capital operations and maintenance. So during our FY twenty-two budget, we built in an additional position for either a floating custodian or for maintenance support to help our maintenance department. We couldn't hire someone last year, so that whole balance of that salary was left over. In addition to that, I asked for a transfer, I think it was in April, for a revamp of our middle school, high school PA system, like Eric spoke to earlier. We had estimates on how much that was gonna cost. We transferred the money. When we engaged a contractor, they came in, diagnosed it, and said they could fix it for a lot cheaper than what they originally estimated because whatever was wrong wasn't as serious as they thought. So we had a residual balance left over from what we asked to transfer. Both those two items left a positive balance, but that's being offset by a deficit of nearly seventy-seven thousand dollars in our custodian substitute account. So amongst all five schools, at, at every day during the year, there was either a vacant custodian position, there was either a turnover, or there was, somebody was out on a leave. So it caused an increase for substitute coverage, for overtime, for other custodians to fill in the gap after their eight-hour shift. When that happens, it all flows to our district-wide maintenance substitute account, not the individual school accounts. That's why you're seeing a deficit of seventy-seven thousand dollars there. So in total, our payroll ended the year with roughly eleven thousand dollar deficit, and our non-payroll roughly twenty-nine thousand dollar balance. Again, with fringe benefits like the other two, it all flows to one area. We're seeing a balance of roughly three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Again, this is mainly due to health insurance, our lower premiums, our lower enrollment. Excuse me. In addition, we did have a vacancy on our crossing guard. I believe it was the one right out here on Bucker. So if anyone knows anyone who wants to be a crossing guard for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, we are accepting applications. So spread the word. In addition, we did spend a little bit more than we anticipated on tents in the fall of calendar year twenty-twenty-one. So those combined were offset our reduction in health insurance. Oh, sorry, I skipped to one. And because we had so many vacant positions, we weren't matching our social security, our Medicare, so our payroll taxes were also reduced as a result of not being able to hire staff members. So overall, for our fringe benefits, we were left with twenty-six thousand dollars in payroll and three hundred and thirty-eight in non-payroll. For our fixed assets, this was only one item, and it was a transfer done during the year. This was to redo our Wi-Fi system throughout the district. This has a lot to do with supply chain issues. We have not received all of the devices yet. They are all on back order. Some of the prices changed. Some of the vendors couldn't supply it. So we were left with a little bit of a residual balance of roughly thirty-five thousand dollars in addition to not being able to get all of the devices. We planned for roughly twenty thousand dollars extra to hire a contractor to come in and help us do it because we couldn't deploy our IT department to go through and put up two- because we couldn't deploy our IT department to go through and put up two hundred new Wi-Fi devices. But because we don't have the devices, we couldn't hire the contractor to come in and do it. So that balance is, is left over, and it is all non-payroll. The next item is student services, where we're seeing roughly six hundred and seventy thousand dollars left over. Just quickly, it's our administration, our administration. We had reduced legal fees last year. For our other teaching services, we're seeing a balance of roughly a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. This is because the decrease in summer school, not this summer school, the one last year from twenty-twenty-one. In addition, we had a vacant speech-language pathologist position that was vacant the entire year. The budget for that, I believe, was roughly ninety-eight thousand dollars. So a lot of that has to do with that one position alone. Those aren't too big, but if you have a question on them, but I'm gonna skip them because they're not that large. Our next big one is pupil services. I'm gonna go back to that one. Tuitions is a, is a, obviously, one of the bigger categories, where we're seeing roughly three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars left over. Again, this is because our decrease in out-of-district tuitions. This is because we prepaid tuitions at the end of last year. But remember, we transferred out a lot of that extra money to pay for a lot of those things that we asked for during the year. That's why you're not seeing a number here in the millions, because we transferred a lot of it out, and because you authorized us to prepay twenty-three tuitions with twenty-two money. But still, we, we are seeing a balance of roughly three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, because the placements are reduced, and because we received nearly two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more in circuit breaker revenue than we anticipated. So that, so you're set on limits on how much you can roll over in circuit breaker. We couldn't roll over anymore, so we had to offset our tuitions by the two hundred and forty-three thousand. So in total, for student services, we're left with roughly a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in payroll and five hundred and three in non-payroll. Last but not least is our technology department, where we're seeing a balance of roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars. Again, this is due to the contractor for the Wi-Fi devices not being able to be hired, because we don't have them all. In addition, we have about eighty thousand dollars being returned in our instructional leadership line, due to a vacancy that occurred from July to roughly April around one of our IT technicians. To offset that, we did see a large increase in our instructional materials around technology, and that's because we deployed our one-to-one devices at the middle school. So we bought all-new Chromebooks for the sixth graders and all-new iPads for the seventh graders, resulting in a little bit of a deficit of fifteen thousand dollars for the instructional materials under their technology DAC. So overall, for technology, we're realizing a forty-four thousand dollar savings in payroll and a thirty-four thousand dollar savings in non-payroll. So again, this is the summary now in DESI form. So all of the individual DAX added together, you see the same two-point-eight million dollars. And in total, we realized savings of approximately three, one-point-three million in payroll alone and another one-point-five million in non-payroll. So at this point, if you were to look at prior budgets, prior year-end presentations, is when I'd ask for a transfer to bail out the DESI accounts. But if you look at the final balances, none of them are in a deficit. So for the first time in a long time, we don't need any year-end transfers. We were able to accurately predict where we were going to end the year within each DESI category. I can't really take credit for that. It was just the way it happened. It's very difficult to predict where you're going to end. It was just lucky we ended that way. Okay, so one item I would request that we vote on tonight is our proposed regional transportation transfer. So this is a little confusing for me to explain. I'm gonna, gonna try to do my best at it. In twenty-fourteen, the state approved a section of the law that allowed regional school districts to transfer out any excess revenue received from transportation reimbursement fund into a separate account. So when we receive the money from the state, it goes into our general fund. If we receive more than we budgeted for, and if the school committee approves it, we can transfer out that residual, that excess balance into the revolving account and hold on to it up to one year's worth, which I'll explain in a second. So tonight, I'm asking your permission to transfer a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from our general fund transportation account to our regional transportation reimbursement fund. So how did I come up with that number and how, how does it work? So when you look at our FY twenty-two budget, under the general fund, now this is just for transportation, we had a budget of roughly three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. But by the end of the year, the state actually gave us five hundred and forty-five thousand, meaning we received a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars more than what we budgeted for. So then you have to look at our revolving account. When FY twenty-two opened, we had approximately three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars sitting there. This is all the balances left over from the prior years that you authorized us to transfer into. But we have a maximum set, just like we explained. There was a five percent maximum for the transportation, I'm sorry, stabilization fund. There's a three percent max for E and D. There's also obviously a max for transportation. Your maximum is the exact amount you received the year before. So you're only allowed to hold on to one year's worth of revenue. So if we do that, we're, we're only allowed to carry over five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We already have three hundred and seventy-three, so we can only transfer a hundred and seventy-one thousand, even though we received a hundred and seventy-three thousand more. So the remaining thirteen hundred dollars stays in the general fund, falls to E and D. Let's just say you approve this. Next year comes, you won't see this again, because we've pretty much hit our max. If I do ask for a transfer, it'll probably be around thirteen hundred dollars, the minor difference in what we receive in FY twenty-three compared to what we receive in twenty-two. And in theory, it could go down. We could receive less in twenty-three than we did in twenty-two, which means I would automatically have to take out that money and drop it into E and D. That wouldn't require a vote, because that's the maximum. I have to do it. We have to turn it over. So I know that's confusing.
Can you?
Yeah, that's, that's why I said it's confusing.
Okay. Can you say that last? I was right with you until that very last part.
So, so if we, oh, sorry. If we do this, we'll end this year with five hundred and forty-five thousand in the transportation revolving fund. So now twenty-three happens. Let's say the state only gives us five hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-three. That means we're only allowed to carry over five hundred into the next year, but we have five hundred and forty-five there.
Transfer it out.
Yeah, so we have to remove out the forty-five thousand dollars, no matter what, because we're only allowed to hold on to that five hundred. So I wouldn't ask you to transfer any money into it. I would just automatically take out the forty-five thousand, and it would fall to E and D. So the reason they do this is because transportation is very difficult to predict. It, the money we receive this fiscal year is based off the expenses from our prior year. And then it's, and then they take that number, and they apply a percentage that's approved through the state budget. So it's almost impossible to predict how much you're going to get. So they opened up this new law, so when I go to build the budget in twenty-four, the exact number I'm going to put in there is five forty-five. There's no more guessing. There's no more kind of wiggle room. That's the exact number we have in the revolving account. That's going to be the exact number I put in there. So now there, there really shouldn't be any more transfers unless we, unless we receive a lot less money going forward. So the plan was, when we originally did this, was to hit that cap. It took us about five years, but we've now hit it. So that line item in the budget won't be as unpredictable anymore. Most school districts take that four, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollar number and just reduce it just a little bit, just in case they need more funding during the year. But most likely, I'm going to put that exact number in there. I don't, I don't think we really need to reduce it by that much, so I'm probably going to go forward with that number. Does that answer your question? Okay. Kinda.
It, it does. Whether I'd be able to explain it is a different question.
So this is the motion. If you guys agree with the transfer, that's all that's needed tonight. That is the last slide, so I can leave it up and kind of answer any questions if you have them.
I have a question.
Please, yeah.
The two-point-eight million dollar excess.
Yep.
Does the school have any discretion over spending that, or does that go back to the towns? Or the state, or where, where does it go?
We do have some choices. If, if we followed what I'm thinking, it would just be a line item on our budget, just like we did last year with the roughly three million dollars in E and D that we had left over. So it, I can try to pull it up, but if you look at our budget, there's a line item that says E and D, three million. That would flow right to that line. We wouldn't, in theory, return any money to the towns, but it would come off the top on their assessment. So it's, we are returning it. We're just not cutting them a check. We're just saying to them, send us less money next year, to the tune of exactly that, you know, that number.
Other questions?
I feel like I understand the budget a little.
Does it ma, does it make sense? I can go over it again.
No, that was, that was helpful, and I, I mean, my, my feedback is that it was helpful to kind of do the combination of the DAC plus the DESI, like that was, that was helpful. I had a question that's probably really more for Eric.
Yeah.
But do we anticipate, this is just really more just curiosity, do the, do we anticipate? It makes sense to me that the pre-K tuitions have been down, given the past couple of years. Do we have any sense of this upcoming year, whether that, do we anticipate that the pre-K is going to come back?
We don't. We actually reduced pre-K from three to two because we weren't able to fill the slots. And part of the, part of the block, if you will, is our pre-Ks are set up so that they have peers and, and specific numbers that you have to match. And we're not able to consistently do that. So for instance, you need a certain number of students who are in IEPs in a room with students who are not in IEPs, what they call peers. And we were not able to fill those IEP spots with kids, therefore losing out on revenues. So if you have, say, fifteen kids in each class, and eight of those positions, spots, seats, if you will, are special education, or, or kids with IEPs, we couldn't fill those twenty-four seats with kids.
The IEP seats.
Yeah, and we only collect tuition off the kids that are not on IEP.
Yeah. That's, that's, I'm glad I asked, because that would not have been what I, I really assumed it was the peers that were not filling the spots.
Yeah, me as well. We, we had people, we had waiting lists for peers, but we can't fill the other spots. We can't just go ahead and fill them because of the way we designed the program. So we reduced one, if you remember last year when we approved the budget, we reduced one pre-K and moved that teacher into a kindergarten spot, so.
Thank you. Anna?
I just have sort of a related question to the E and D process. So just so the public doesn't get too excited, it's, it's not necessarily the full two-point-eight is going to go back to E and D. We're going to pull back out our max allowable, three percent to keep into our revolving E and D, and then the, it'll be the remainder, right, that would flow into that E and D line? Anna?
It's probably going to be more than that number, the two-point-eight. Yeah, because we already have three percent set aside that's not included in this number.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We are already at the max.
We're already at it. So this is on top of that.
So this is, that's why you can say with almost total assurance that full two-point-eight is going to go back as an offset, because we've already topped off our E and D from last year's excess.
Correct. And it'll be a little bit more than two-point-eight, because remember, this is just the expense side.
Yeah.
There's also the revenue side, where we did receive, off the top of my head, I think it's about another hundred thousand more.
Okay.
So it'll probably be just under three million if I had to take a guess. But that, that will come with my E and D presentation in about a month.
I can't wait.
And, and can I jump in?
Yeah, please.
The, the thing to keep in mind is, like we did last year, we funded our OPEB account with that E and D money, so we were able to take advantage of, of that piece. So Vinnie and I have talked about some strategies to be able to bring back to the, to the communities to, you know, as you know, anything we do has to be voted by the community.
Yeah, no, it's great.
And the, the, the bigger reality is, and I, I, I will say this publicly, because I think it needs to be said, is our budget, in my opinion, is probably not sustainable at the rate we're going. So we're going to have to take a good look at that. Vinnie and I have talked about, a lot about some of the adjustments that we can make along the way, because it's, it's, you know, this, you're going to hit the ceiling, and you're just not going to be able to, to go any further. But if you're ending, you know, in our case, I'll just look at the payroll side. If you're ending with a million and a half in payroll, because you can't hire people, then you need to look differently at your structures. I'll talk a little bit more about that when, when I do my superintendent's report. But how we redesign or redeploy our assets is, is going to be important, because the, the budget itself just can't continue to, to grow and grow and grow and grow. The communities couldn't keep up with it. So we just have to figure out how to work with our communities and make some adjustments along the way, so. It may, it may be, you know, an opportunity to take advantage of that E and D, this excess money again. So we'll just have to figure that out as we get into the budget process.
Are we ready for motion? Julia, do you have a question? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, Eric, I didn't hear what you just said. I was like going in and out. I don't know if it's my internet.
He said a long thing.
Don't repeat the whole thing. Just repeat the last like thirty seconds.
I'll give you the, yeah, the quick version is just.
Oh, this wor, this is working. I'm hearing it. Okay.
Just talking about the, last year, we were comparing the E and D from last year to this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Where we took advantage of that to fund OPEB. There's still some strategies we might be able to use for this year's E and D, but what I said was, in, in the bigger picture, we need to examine the budget very carefully this, this cycle, because the, this is my personal opinion. The budget can't continue to grow. We're going to outgrow our community capabilities, and that's, that's an important piece to keep our eyes on. I think it's important to manage this a little bit differently. We talked about assets. So if there's a million and a half left over in positions that we didn't hire, then we need to probably look at ways to redeploy our assets or redesign our programs that might make better use of, of what we have or don't have, or can hire and not hire, so.
Yeah, so that really answered my question, sort of what is the big concern? What is the overarching theme? And I know that you do talk about, talk about that a lot, like the budget can't continue. It's going to outgrow our communities. So thanks for, thanks for repeating that for me.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Amy, let's have a motion.
I move that the Hamilton-Munam Regional School Committee approves the FY twenty-two regional transportation transfer as recommended herein by the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration and as presented on a previous slide entitled, "Proposed Regional Transportation Transfer."
Second? Second by Anna Seidzik. Vinnie, can you put the slide up? Thank you. Is there any questions?
No, that makes sense.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to vote. All right, we'll start with you, Julia.
Yes.
Dana's yes. Anna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes five to zero of all the members who are present.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vinnie. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Vinnie.
And I am just going to throw it out there that the past two years that I've been here, Vinnie has. Vinny has helped us by doing a little Budget 101 at some point in the fall. I'm gonna just put out a, put out a shout out that if you, if that's possible, that was very, very helpful.
Yeah, I can try to put in maybe two dates while I do the budget calendar.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can talk about it, but I, I just, to our, especially to our new members, I know, I found it very, very helpful, and I would go again, because it's-
Yeah, I'll try to put two, just in case somebody can't make it. But should I try to do one during the day and one at night, or both at night, or whatever?
Well, I mean, we can-
Doesn't matter to me.
We can, we can figure it out as we-
Maybe I do one during the day, one at night, just in case somebody, you know, days are better for them and nights aren't.
Yeah, we can, we can figure that out. Yeah, variety.
Trying to meet everyone's schedule.
Yeah, no, I think we can figure out, I mean, and, you know, we could do it a number of ways. We could do it virtually, we could do it in person, we could do, yeah. Thank you.
And we'll be coming out with a calendar probably for the September 8th, or 22nd.
The budget, budget calendar.
Draft, draft budget calendar will come, be coming at you September 8th.
Okay. All right, Eric.
I'm on.
You're on again.
Okey dokey. Just a few announcements, mostly for the general public. I just wanna reiterate that our school supply lists are posted on the website, our fancy website that is, is, has gained a lot of traction and compliments from people, because you can now actually search it for what you're looking for, and it gives you the right answer. But everything is posted by school on the website, so if you need to know what school supplies your child might need, you can find that in the, on the website, and I think if you go into the Parents Center, you will find it in there. Just a reminder, Wendy Ing, our Nutrition Director, has asked me to remind everybody that all first school lunches are free this year for all students. State of Massachusetts was the fifth state, fifth, fifth state to jump on board and, and pay for lunches for all students for this current upcoming school year. And I'm gonna underscore first lunches. Guys like me, when I was in high school, I had more than one, and the second and third are not free.
Just one.
I was gonna ask you what first meant.
Stay tuned, our, our website, new features coming out. We have a phone app that we're working on, cleaning up to get ready to release. And then we'll, we'll have a communication app that will be connected to that as well, so we'll move some of our communications into that. We're just, we're just trying to make sure they all work appropriately, and then train people on how they work and, and use it. And I think people will find that a little more opportune, if you will, to get information and to be able to jump on the website through your phone. It, it, it makes it nice and clean. Tomorrow, we kick off our, our, really, our, our athletics for this coming school year. Football comes in tomorrow, and then the rest of these, the teams will come in next week. So all of our fourth, fall teams start before the start of school. So there'll be life in the, at the middle school, high school complex, which is exciting. We're looking forward to that. To me, as a high school principal for many, many years, 18 years, it was the, like, that's the kickoff to, school's about to begin, so it's very exciting for me. And I know, you know, kids are excited to get back into seeing their peers and, and playing some organized sports. We're also looking forward to the sixth and ninth grade orientations. Those will be coming up on the Tuesday of the first week of school, which is the 30th. Those are days where kids in the sixth and ninth grade will come to their respective schools and get information that they need to know, including their schedules. They'll meet their peer mentors, they'll get tours, they'll meet their teachers, and it's a good opportunity for them to kinda find their way around before everybody floods into the building the following day. Next week, we'll be hosting new teacher orientation over two days, Monday and Tuesday. Both days will be at the high school. We're bringing in 17 new teachers into the district. Not necessarily first-year teachers, but new to the district. We have some that are veteran teachers, but this is an opportunity for them to learn about the district, get their technology, get their access cards, learn about how to get into certain things within their computers, like Aspen and Google and Google Classroom, their login, things like that. So it's a good, it's a good opportunity for us to work with them one-to-one. We have a number of groups that just roll through and work with these newbies for, over that two-day period, so. That's exciting, exciting for me. It's, it's great to be able to start to show off the district and show what we do and how we do it. And then one, one note of crisis that I, I think we're trying to figure out how to deal with. We have a number, a large number of open positions right now. Not counting coaching positions, and I'm not gonna count them, because most of them are for later in the year, so I'm not nervous about those, but we have approximately 30 positions still unfilled in the district a week before school starts. Now, many of those are-
Did you say three zero?
Three zero.
Plus.
Plus, yeah, when you start to adding coaches and things like that. So these are positions, mostly, I think half of them are teachers assistants, either full-time or part-time. Lunch monitors, crossing guards, teachers assistants, I said, and, and some other positions, like an ESL teacher. We hired an ESL teacher, we contracted this person, and a week ago, they quit, so.
SLP.
Yes, speech-language pathologist. We have zero applicants for those jobs. School psych- psychologist job, zero applicants. Many of the TA positions have one or two applicants, so our principals are scrambling right now. We put out some info on LinkedIn, I did today, and before I came to the meeting, noticed that we got a few new people applying for positions, but certain, still certainly not enough. So we're in, we're in crisis mode right now, trying to figure out different ways to get the word out that we are hiring. And there, there are half-time positions, full-time positions. Some of them are, you know, the crossing guard, lunch monitors. So some of the, some of the issues we were running into last year, we're seeing this year. Of concern is the TA positions, because that, as you know, those are connected to students' IEPs, and those are legally binding documents, which could end up costing us in the long run. So we're, we're working to continue to push.
Is, is there anything we can do about that? I mean, is, can we make the positions more attractive? Can you offer to pay more or do something else, or are we sort of stuck with a, is the offer changeable at all?
So we, we, we do have a budgeted scale for, I'll just use TA as an example. They make about $21 an hour, roughly. If you're a TA and you come in and say, "I'm, I'm gonna take that job for $21 an hour, but I need insurance," you're basically not bringing home any money, because of the cost of insurance. So that, that is a, a factor that gets in the way of, of our hiring in those types of positions. Some of them are just, there's just no one out there, like SLPs, speech-language pathologists, are just not out there. Last year, we couldn't even hire those positions. We had to, we had to contract that work out as we needed it. You know, and that gets expensive, it's just, but, but you have to do it. You need, you need those positions in place because of what's in kids' IEPs, so.
I do wanna say, I, I believe it was in the Salem News today, there was an article, it didn't list Hamilton, but it listed a whole bunch of other schools describing exactly that.
And reaching out to other districts, they're all in similar places. There's no one that can say, "I have all my positions filled right now." I was just, actually, this afternoon, I, I was at Whittier Tech, and they're, they're, you know, generally full. She's like, "Usually, we were full, we're not either," so, those types of places. Everybody's, everybody's struggling. It's mostly support positions, for whatever reason. You know, the, the, the bigger thing with, a year ago, companies were hiring, kind of over-hiring. And I think what you're gonna see now, as, as we, you know, drift towards recession, I'm not gonna say we're in, I'm just saying drift towards, and companies start to cut. So you're starting to see companies cut 10, 15% of their force, their workforce. That may drop some of those people back down that are, you know, willing to work the position. But $20 an hour is not a lot of money anymore, and that's a, that's a limiting factor for us. So we may have to get creative and offer a signing bonus, or, you know, we may have to, we may have to bump some of these, like the TA positions, there's no contract, they don't have a contract, so there's nothing that's, that's in stone. We just have a chart that we follow, so we may have to make some adjustments to, to be able to pull this off.
Yeah, some schools were offering bonuses for retention bonuses.
Who was that?
I don't know, I can't remember which school it was, but it was, it was on NPR.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're gonna have to look at everything. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at all kinds of things.
It was like 50 grand, I don't remember, which just struck me as incredible. But this was to, to take sort of long-tenured, highly qualified teachers and keep them, stop them retiring.
Yeah, and it, and, I mean, there's a lot of teacher movement still. You know, what's, what's interesting is, teachers are signing contracts with one school district and continuing to look for a job for more money. You know, and, and I, I can use the SLP for, as an example. SLP gets a master's degree. It's, it's, if I get a master's degree in education, it's 33 to 36 credits usually. If a speech-language pathologist or a school psychologist gets a master's degree, it's 60-plus credits. So when you start to look at the way a salary scale's structured, you get, you get paid by your degree. So you're on a column for having a master's degree. It doesn't necessarily say a master's degree with 30 credits versus. So some school communities are shifting now to say, "All right, we're gonna pay you as, you know, a master's degree at 33, and then give you more for the extra credit." So we're gonna, we have to just look at all of our options and try to figure out ways to entice people. Like I said, we, we put it out on LinkedIn earlier today. All of our ads go to Indeed and all the major advertising agents, so it's, it's, you know, it's really just trying to figure out how to get, how to entice people. So we, we may, we may be in a position to, to financially make some, some unusual moves, like offering some type of a bonus. You know, we became close with our custodial staff, but filled that last year, so. That's the last thing I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, committee reports. I don't think Capital Finance has not met policy.
We're meeting on Monday.
Okay, and Negotiations has not met? And don't have a plan, to me, just yet.
Wow.
Maybe.
Ching said.
Okay. All right, I have a couple things. One, Eric, I meant to just, I meant to ask you this before, but, so I'm gonna ask you here, is do we, have we figured out a strategic, a date for the forum, the school committee forum?
Yes, so since we already kinda put it on everybody's schedule, we talked about, Dana and I had talked about a fourth date in September, and I, I think it's, it's just a little, it's a, it's a little much to ask. So I think it might make sense for us right now to take the 15th, which we set aside for a workshop already on our plans, and use that for, for a workshop, but for the forum. And the forum is about 90 minutes, so we could also follow up with a little more of the Equity Vision discussion after that. If people, rather than have another, like, you'd do four meetings in a row, four, four Thursdays in a row, I mean, so I'm just trying to-
So you're, I was, just, you're looking at the 15th, which everybody should have on your calendar, September 15th.
September, yes, sorry.
Right? I'm just making sure you're all looking and saying yes, that you have that on there. So I know I have mine on there with a bunch of question marks and things like that. But, so you'd be, you'd be saying we could basically achieve both things on one night, is that what you're?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the, the-
So we would be with the leadership team, or no?
Leadership team would probably not be there, I think. I think, I think the, the discussion is gonna be around that vision-
Okay.
Of what that, what that means to this group.
Okay. Uh, yeah, do we have times? I have it penciled in for 6:30, but I don't know, do we have out time?
I had penciled in for six, but- It says six on the, it says six on the website, for what it's worth, but I don't know that that's accurate.
Well, I think we're, we're figuring it out. But I'm, but we're, we're thinking not, not on the 29th, because that would make a million in a row.
Yeah, I was just trying to cut that extra meeting out, not necessarily having four in a row.
I just never make plans on Thursdays now, so.
Okay, well, shall we-
If we do it, if we do it at six, it will, it will give us the opportunity to, to do that work, plus do the equity discussion that was originally planned.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so we'll say 6:00 PM on the 15th, and that is a, that is a day that I know I've already sent out to the committee, but I don't know that, maybe I didn't get a time on that, so I'll send it to the rest of the committee.
Yes, we, we can go either six or seven, whatever you wanna do, because they put it in for seven as a placeholder.
Okay. Do people feel okay about 6 o'clock?
It's about, it's about 90 minutes for the-
I'm the only one who has to work so late.
The focus group.
6:30 would be better for me, but if everyone else wants to do six, I know the work is important, so that's fine. I can do six.
Thank you, Anna. Okay. Okay, I had two other things. One is, and so, we don't need to do too much about this, but just, we've been sort of off and on talking about the regional agreement. And I just wanted to give a quick sort of update where we are. Basically, we, last, last we left you, we're sort of investigating special legislation, and the, and, and I think the towns are interested also in investigating special legislation. I had a quick conversation with Sean Farrell, who's the Chair of the Hamilton Select Board, and around that. And one suggestion was, we haven't really done this, has gotten a real red line of the agreement from the lawyer. And so my thought was maybe to do that with the two lawyers together. So the town lawyer and the, and basically, what I'm thinking of is just a review. We really haven't gotten, we've only really tackled the first section. I'm not talking about making changes, just sort of looking at, you know, let us know what, cross out what things no longer comply with mass general law, what things are sort of easy fixes, things like, you know, changing the Select Board of Selectmen to Select Board, things like that. And then what things are kind of like, this whole section needs to be reworked, you know? I, I don't know, I guess I'm coming to you, 'cause my gut is to just ask Mark Terry to begin pursuing that with, you know, just, I don't see that as a huge project. It's really just reviewing the document. And Julia, you look like maybe you can't hear me? Could she hear me? Julia?
Sorry, hold on a second. Sorry, I was just looking at my calendar. Okay, I'm with you.
Okay, I just thought you couldn't hear me. It looked like you couldn't hear me. Anyway, so I just want some feedback, whether I certainly can put that on an, an agenda next time, and we could vote on it. I didn't wanna overstep. If people didn't feel like, it's a little, I sort of wish that David were here, 'cause he's been with me on the journey, and even before I was here, so.
So that would be with Mark and then KP Law?
KP Law, I believe her name is Lauren, but KP Law, from the, the two towns-
Who represents both towns.
She, right, correct. Their lawyer represents both, the law firm represents both towns.
Right, so the request, so it wouldn't really be the opening of major substantive discussions at this point? It would just be like the tidying of-
It would not even be tidying, it would really be just so that we have a shared document that's marked up in the same way that both town, that it would be that, like, the two lawyers would say, "Yes, this section here no longer complies with mass general law."
We need to fix that.
Right, we're not, we wouldn't be making suggestions, or, right, or just these, so that's, that's just a, you know, I don't, I don't, I, I didn't wanna just go ahead and say, "Go ahead and do that," but I also think it's, it's a fairly small step.
I mean, I, I think we do, we do need to start to move forward on it, and that seems reasonable to me. So my feedback would be that I would support putting that on an agenda to formalize that.
And I believe probably the Select Board would have to have some conversations regarding that too, but it seems that they would like to have that. It's basically information, we're just looking for information. So I don't, I guess my real question is, do we feel like we need, I don't wanna vote on something that wasn't on the agenda. I can put it on the next agenda, if we feel like this is just a continuation of the work that, that- if we feel like this is just a continuation of the work that, that negotiations has been doing all along, I could just move forward. I don't, I'm looking for feedback. Julia?
I, I would just go, I would go with what you recommend. I really, 'cause I just don't know enough about-
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, I would just go with what you recommend. I don't really have an opinion either way. I think we could do it on the next agenda, but-
Okay. I, I would suggest-
I would support putting it on an agenda for sure.
Okay.
I would support that as well, especially because Jen and David are also not here.
Yeah, I wish they were here.
Yeah, I think for completeness, we should talk about it as a-
Yep, I'm happy to put it on the next agenda, just, I think it's a, like I said, I think it's a fairly minor in the whole big picture of things, but, okay, all right, I'll do that. All right, it is, we have 60 seconds. My, the last thing that I'd like to do, and I really, I don't, I do wanna do it, so I will, in 60 seconds, ask for a motion to extend the meeting, but the next thing I hope to do is to bring up, at our workshop, we spent some time brainstorming goals. At the workshop, the committee had asked Anna to sort of compile and, you know, the brainstorm and, and send it to us. I did make a, I took it, and I made some, a couple of minor tweaks, just 'cause Anna said she wouldn't be offended if I did.
Not at all.
But it didn't really change anything substantive, and, so I guess my hope is that this evening, we could have some time to look through this and see whether this is the school committee goals that we want to have. My inclination is not to spend tremendous amounts of time on this, we've spent several years without any school committee goals whatsoever, so I'm excited that we're even able to have a conversation about school committee goals. All right, it is 10 o'clock, and I am very mindful that we have, we have protocols about that, so I am going to make a motion, I move to extend the meeting up to half an hour. And?
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik?
Uh huh.
Is there discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion, okay, we can vote. Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana, yes? Julia?
Yes.
David?
No.
And, and the motion passes four to one. Okay, I hope not to take the whole half hour. Okay, all right, so feedback thoughts, I did get, I did wanna say, it is, I did get a little bit of feedback, and I, I, this is a very aspirational statement, is, it is way up here, and I, I do see it a little bit more as kind of a vision or a mission, rather than sort of deliverable goals. I'll just put in my two cents, I feel comfortable with that, but it is a valid, I guess, concern.
Oh, I, can I have a, I have a clarifying question?
Yep.
So are these more of just guidelines that we kind of accept, or do we need to vote on them?
I, I do think we need to vote on it. I do think it is a statement that would be on the school, on the website, and something that-
Right.
Much like the poster that we just discussed, that it's the kind of thing that one might point to throughout the year and say, "How does whatever we're discussing fit into the school committee goals, or does it fit into the school committee goals?"
Like a statement of our purpose?
Correct, that's, but yes, I do think-
And tonight, you're looking just for feedback.
Tonight, I'm looking for feedback, my intent was to put it, my hope would be to put it in a final form so that it could be voted on preferably in just kind of an up or down vote at a future meeting.
I would say for me, I, I really like them, the way that they were written, I think that it encapsulated what we talked about at the workshop, and I think everyone's viewpoint is kind of represented. I just, I really personally like them, I didn't have any specific feedback, so.
Okay.
I like them.
All right, thank you. I'll take other feedback.
Yeah, I agree that they sort of read more like a mission statement or a vision statement, which I think is fine, because there's still things that we can look back at when we're making decisions and say, "Does this decision fulfill one or more of these five things?" So I'm fine with it.
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, I guess I've run too many corporate strategic plans and budgets and plans, they, you know, you would never accept those as goals, because you can't measure them, you don't know when you achieve them, so it, you know, there's no accountability. They're fine as, as aspirational, but if you wanna then translate that into something that has operating meaning, you've gotta say, "Well, in the first instance, here's, here's how we would know when we, when we were good at that, and here's a metric for this coming year," whatever, and then what done, was, as Eric has done for-
Correct.
For his, so you translate it into something that's actionable and measurable.
Right, I, I actually, I do, I mean, I think I said to you, you know, I, it is, to me, I, I, we called them goals, to me, they really are more sort of a guiding mission statement or vision. I don't disagree with what you're saying about that, you know, in, in terms of the strategic plan or the district goals, it's really important to have very specific, concrete deliverables, and this is a little bit different than that, so, I hear you.
I mean, offline, we could work on translating those aspirations to something more measurable, without going outside the, the swim lanes of those, those aspirations.
Well, we can't really do it offline.
What, what was that?
You can't really do it offline.
Unfortunately, we can't, that, that is one of the things that makes-
You can't do it offline.
And, and, and that's actually, from my point of view, that is-
Well, three people, just not four or more.
Right, I, I guess what, my, this is just me, I, I just, we have so many other things to do that I don't necessarily wanna spend a lot of time in this meeting, while I actually concur with you on a lot of that. I guess I'm so excited that we were able to have any shared vision, you know, so.
Are we required to have goals?
No, we are not.
So would we say that the goals that Eric laid out earlier are also our goals, and then this lovely document, and I agree, that we all kind of came to a consensus that these are great things, call this something else, mission statement?
We, we absolutely could call it something else, that would be okay. Anna?
What I was gonna say, and, 'cause the first time we talked about it, we, I did actually add sort of more deliverables, and I do agree with you actually, that if we were to model the same format, I personally think that because we've done such a good job with the district goals, and really, in my, this is, this is why I'm okay with this aspirational statement, the district goals should be our goals, like, we should not necessarily have a separate goal, because our whole purpose of existing is to support the district goals. So I feel like I'm okay with sort of trying to build this sort of culture and how we're leading it, because, but really, the third one, to me, is where the meat of it and measurability would come in, you know, are, have we actually supported the superintendent? I could think of some metrics around retaining teachers, you know, turnover rate and vacancies, like Vinnie just went through ad nauseam, the ways we could measure it, but those, to me, are more operational, so I'm, I'm okay with it. I would say, just now that I've read it, not in the darkness of my own house, but, you know, I think that the way you edited Dana the first one, I would remove that comma after educators, because before it read differently, and now there's a comma splice there, that's just one thing.
Yeah, I agree.
And I wanna think of a different word in the fifth one, we've got serves twice, we're serving all these things, and I think, one, it's boring, and two, we should think about a more exciting, diversified word there, but I don't have a perfect answer for you right now, but I, I wanna change one of those serves.
Oh, I, well, we, yes, I love the word serve, but, so that might have come from me, I don't know. Maybe become a source of civic pride, and, I don't know, we can, so.
Inspires, I don't know, just something. Serve, serve, the grammarian in me doesn't like that.
Okay, so what I, my plan will be is to try to put them up for a vote on the next agenda.
Sure.
Okay, thank you all, that was productive. Do we have any topics for future meetings? Nope, okay, I would entertain a motion.
I have moved that we adjourn at 10:08 PM, maybe?
Second.
Second by Julia, any discussion? Okay, David?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana's yes, Julia?
Yes, I'm holding the bedroom hostage.
All right, it's unanimous, we are dismissed.